Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the South Orange Planning Board for July, now July 16th. Could we have a roll call please, Eddie?
Yes, Mr. Brown, Mr. Colton Max.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rosner.
Here.
Mr. Hutt.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Torpe.
Here.
Reverend Wilson, Ms. Gruha.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
And Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
This is pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975. This is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2013 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2012, and by filing said notice in the office of the Village Club. We have several applications to be heard tonight. It's going to be a reasonably long night, but first, is Mr. Freeland here or did he leave?
He was here.
Was here.
He just wanted to confirm that the application for Georgios was adjourned until September meeting.
Yes, we will adjourn that application.
He did not see on the agenda that it was listed to be carried to the September meeting, so.
Bless him have read that.
Yes.
Okay, so that will be carried to September meeting, thank you. So the first case we'll hear tonight is case number 228. It's the Third and Valley Urban Renewal LLC. This is a continuation from June 19, 2013, Block 2,304, Lot 3-9, 165 Valley Street. This application is a preliminary and final site plan. The applicant proposes to develop on the site a mixed-use residential and commercial structure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, before we begin, since I did not attend the last meeting, excuse me, I believe you need me to certify that I watched the video and I believe there's at least one other member who didn't attend at least one of the meetings. And if we're going to vote tonight, you have to have a certification set, an accurate statement.
Yes. Jack, have they provided certifications yet?
They have not.
I was going to, I would be happy to give a verbal certification, but if you need an rating, I'll do it as well. And I believe that you have others as well who are in the same position.
Others? Whose others?
For a different project.
For a different project. So, how many written certifications do we have?
One.
Good.
Leave one there for Allison.
Allison, who's that?
Maybe Miss Question.
Allison, were you there last time?
Were you there last time?
This is to certify that you watched the video.
I don't know.
I'm sorry, you didn't get it.
We have one more.
No, 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 Michael, send it around. Michael, send it around.
Excuse us, we'll be done with this in a minute.
We appreciate it. You would have raised it later, but we appreciate it.
Want any reason to have a problem?
We'll do the E B thing. All right, thank you. Council, good evening.
Good evening. You're still married on 333 Rose Smith and Davis. And as you initially stated, this is my third appearance, oops, okay, third appearance before you on the application. Since we were last with you, we made an additional submission in response to a number of questions and comments, and we have received back comment letters from both your planning consultant and your engineering consultant, and we have endeavored to respond to those comments as well. While we did email them yesterday, we handed out yesterday's submission to you in hard copy, which contains substantial information and responses to those, to the information requests and comments in Ms. Gruel and Mr. Keller's most recent comment letters. In response, based upon the subject matter or the issues that were raised in there, some of them, I think the documents are responsive to, but we are proposing this evening to recall two of our witnesses to address some of the comments where we think that we could lend a little clarity to some of those issues. And those would be our parking and garage expert and our landscape architect. And then we would propose, both of them will be brief, but to address specific issues that have been raised. And then our planner will testify, sort of as the wrap-up, he has not presented yet before the board, and he will deal with the waivers and variances that we've requested. And I will tell you that we did, although we were not required to, we did renotice this, and we did specify the variances that were being sought with regard to the signage. And we have the proofs of that. It was not required by the note, the announcement, but we felt more comfortable erring on the side of, to be honest, my neuroses as opposed to what we thought was necessary under the statute. So with that, we have handed out to you the paperwork that we will be referring to with our first two witnesses, and then when we call Mr. Abramson with the planning testimony, we will discuss the items that he will be referring to for your ease of reference while he's testifying. So unless the board has questions of us or additional housekeeping, we would call our first witness.
That sounds good.
Yes. I don't know if you need to do anything other than remind him of that.
No.
Okay, all right. Todd, could you just briefly review for the board, you've previously been qualified as an expert with regard to the garage design. Could you just walk the board again briefly through how we propose the garage to function?
Correct.
And then we'll go on to some specific questions.
Sure. So I guess just as a revisit from the last time that we had talked about the parking garage, and I guess what you have before you is a four-page memo, or a three-page memo that I had developed, in conjunction with two diagrams.
Todd, could you just identify the date on the letter that we're referring to?
So the date is June 26.
Thank you.
And so basically, what the three-page memo represents is a summary of how the garage is intended to operate, first of all. So the first paragraph, in terms of the functional design, indicates that the desired operation and function of the garage was intended to provide a distinction, an operational distinction, between the commuter and the public parking and the residential parking. So when you come into the garage, as I'll go over, there's a separate entry/exit for each of those particular users. Also, the functional design actually provides convenient access for the residents on each of their levels, rather than a parking garage that would be designed where you would nest those residential parkers on the top level. This particular one provides access on each level to the adjacent residential component. The operational aspects, we had talked about this before, the residential, just speaking purely of the residential, what we have done, and what was previously described, was a gated access to the residential user group area. And what we have done to try to streamline the residential parking as much as possible is provide a gateless entry, gateless vehicular entry into the residential area at ground tier. So at this point, what I'll do is I'll refer to what is designated as Figure 1, so we can look at that for reference. If you recall, on the right-hand side, well, I should say, on the left-hand side, that gate, the vehicular entry/exit gate, is intended for the commuters and the public to go up the ramp and into the parking garage. The one on the right is, the one that I was just referring to, is the residential access. Now, the residential users enter the parking garage and, just based on the functionality of it, drive through 29 spaces which are classified as commuter and public parking. So essentially, we want to remove that gate upon entry, as we have shown there, and provide free flow in. Now, we still have to have a gated access. So the gated access for the residential parking is right prior to where the residential parking starts, and that's at the bottom-left portion. So that's the one modification to the residential, residential parking area, is to try to create a free flow. Now, upon exit, we want to maintain that gate, and I'll describe in a minute, but we want to maintain the gate upon exit to try to provide a mechanism, or one, at least one mechanism, by which we'll minimize any type of cross-traffic at the main entry/exit area. Okay? So upon exit, if I'm a residential parker, I go through the gate, the gate goes up based on a detector loop, you drive over a detector loop and the gate goes back down. The third paragraph represents the commuter parking, commuter public parking, that is currently located at grade, the 29 spaces that I had mentioned a minute ago. The function of that, in terms of an operational function, it's intended that, you know, anybody can come in and park in those spaces, but that is going to be by a pay-by-space system. So anybody parking in those 29 spaces, typically you would have a numbered stall, you would park in those spaces, and then you would actually go to the pay station and pay to park in those spaces. So that's the intent of parking in the, those 29 spaces. Also, it was mentioned about scooter and motorcycle parking. Obviously, we want to try to provide scooter parking and motorcycle parking down in that area. It's not advisable, obviously, to send those vehicles, scooters and motorcycles, up the ramp, so we wanted to try to keep them as, as low as possible. The commuter public spaces, the third paragraph, represents commuter public spaces on the supported levels. So what we had done here is, in the first paragraph, essentially indicates that, you know, the total commuter spaces in the parking garage is 258. So on the supported level, we have 229 spaces. So 229 plus the 29 spaces that I just described is the 258 total commuter public parking. We also took a look at investigating a lot full or garage full. That was one comment from last time. As you approach the parking garage, how do we know that there's available parking in the commuter public portion? So it's proposed that we put a lot-full sign upon entry, if you've seen those parking garages where they have that. And typically, you would, you would designate a garage full at approximately 95% occupancy, not necessarily 100, 95%, which would kind of eliminates that frustration factor. There may be a few spaces, but they may be very difficult to find in the parking garage. And essentially, what happens is, as you drive in and drive out of the commuter public area, based on the detector loops, that is what would trigger the differential counter and then signalize that lot-full sign, how many spaces are available in the parking garage. The two means of operating the commuter, yes? I'm sorry.
I'm trying to understand the diagram, Figure 1. All right, so it looks like the residential is the green arrow?
No, the residential is actually the parking gate system on the right-hand side.
Would be nice to have a similar residence. No, we're dead. Yeah. That's just residential.
So.
Looking at Figure 1, all right?
Yes.
On the left side, we see what are the, what I believe to be the 29 parking, public parking spaces, correct?
Right in here?
And then this control gate for the residential access, correct?
Correct.
And those are payout stalls, 29 spaces, correct?
These are, 29 spaces, correct.
And the entrance and exit for the, for the 29 spaces and the commuter parking is the left gate?
It's this gate right here on the right-hand side.
If I'm looking at the diagram, it's the right-hand gate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's residential.
So if you're looking at the diagram, the vehicular entry/exit gate on the left, closest toward the stair elevator tower, is the main commuter public parking for the levels above. And that's where you would come in and you would ramp up, up into the garage. Correct. So.
When you're going up the ramps, the ramps for the residential, even with the force of the building and the.
Correct.
I thought last time you had to get away around.
No, no, we had it this way before. Yeah, we've had, yeah. We felt that, that this scenario where the commuters and the public on the right-hand, the left-hand side, and the residential access on the right, that actually provides the best scenario for in-and-outs. If it was reversed, it actually complicates things a little more. So in terms of.
So the residential, the residential folks have a different ramp than the commuter, correct?
Correct. That's right. Exactly. Right, it's a two-ramp system.
I'm sure I got it.
Right.
Now.
The, the operational mechanism of the commuter and the public portion on the left-hand side, as you would enter and go up the ramp, there's two means of doing that. One is, because predominantly the commuter public portion would be monthly parkers, there's the first option of providing an AVI system. That would be the same system that would access the residential parking. An AVI system is essentially a vehicular indicator that a car can go, and it's essentially a hands-free, so when you come in and you're a monthly parker, you have an AVI, a tag, and the gate goes up and you go in. That's actually the fastest means of transaction at a gate upon entry. The other option is to operate it with a no-gated system at all. So anybody coming into the garage, just like the residential portion, which is free-flow in, no gate, commuter public coming in, go up, it would be open gated system as well. The difference there is that when you come into the parking garage, you go into the gate, it would have to operate as a pay-by-space system in its entirety, with the exception of the commuters that would have, or vehicles that would have hang tags or monthly parkers. So if I come into the garage, go up the ramp, I park, and each stall is numbered, and essentially what I do is I go to the main pay station and you, and you pay. Okay? So there's a non-gated system. And essentially, what that does, it frees up any type of queuing that may be anticipated at the, the entry of the parking garage.
With your, the gates at the exit, I assume they must be tied together to try to force alternating?
That's with the residential?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. I was going to get into that, but yes, there's mechanisms in place here where the commuter gate and the residential gate is tied in with the detector loops, so that if I'm a commuter now, if I'm coming down the ramp, and I'm a commuter coming out of the garage, there's a gated system. Right. But what this shows is that there's a couple different means of signage, but then also there's a detector loop there that would, you know, allow or prohibit one or the other from operating. Right. Otherwise. That's exactly right. That's right.
They're going to hit, right?
That's, that's right. Okay. So, so that was actually the, the next point of discussion was the vehicular traffic design, and the mechanisms in place to try to minimize that potential cross-traffic that may happen, only at the end of the day, those dispersed times, when the residents would be coming back into the garage and the commuters would be leaving the parking garage. So we feel pretty comfortable that, that this is going to be the best answer, you know, to minimizing that. And yes, it's, it's good, because these detector loops, they can be tied back into one or both of those gates, and sequenced such that if a vehicle is actually coming in to the garage and wants to go into the residential parking zone, drive through, that the, a commuter exiting will not be allowed to exit.
The only issue, I mean, having dealt with a bunch of these things very recently in a parking, parking deck, in a parking garage and lot, is tailgating, where the guys literally ride on the back of the other car, going in or out, because when the gate gets ready to come down, if you're close enough, since they're all designed not to hit the car, they automatically go back up. So what's to prevent at the rush hour when people are trying to exit, and there are people coming down both sides simultaneously, and each person is riding on the other tail of the other car, to still force them to slow down?
To stop, to stop. As, as the one goes through, the other one must need to stop.
The guy goes too fast enough, they're almost always, haven't seen it yet, they're automatically go back up again.
Automatically go back up, yeah, yeah.
And otherwise, hit the car.
That's, that's a good point, yeah.
I would actually suggest that during rush hour, that, you know, someone who's running the thing, you may want to actually put the gate in an opposition to let the 20 cars, 30 cars come out, because we know the two most crowded trains, we know what's most likely to happen.
Right.
Exactly what it's talking about, to manually have somebody there, put the gate up. To manually have somebody there, put the gate up, and let the cars go through, assuming the counter could still.
Right.
Counter the drug.
Right.
It doesn't matter when commuters are leaving, because people aren't coming at night.
That's a, that's a good point.
But I would, that, that would be my preference to see it, to avoid exactly that issue.
Exactly what you're saying.
Traffic monitor. You need that guy to stand there.
Program the computer.
Not really, you just have to have some kind of coke in the gate.
Well, the concern was.
We don't have somebody there now, so why do you need somebody there then?
But what do you do for people who don't have a monthly pass, who do a pay-as-you-go daily thing?
They're just leaving, not in the morning, that's when they leave. Who's going to, who's going to go into a park, through a commuter parking deck at night?
It's only, but that's also what you're talking about, it's only the exit gate, so at that point, people still coming in have to swipe or do whatever they're going to do to get into the garage, it's just getting out.
That would be the residents going in.
Yeah.
The only, the only concern I would have is that they're still up, and you're having that crossing.
Yeah.
And there is no gate to control alternating, then who controls the alternating when two guys are saying, I need to be home at 5:30?
Surviving the finish line.
Those are very, very valid points, yeah. I think that's, that's going to come into play when, you know, in the next step in this process, is, is when I develop the, the parking equipment specification and how that actually operates. I'll, I'll obviously take that in consideration, so.
So is what you're saying, that's sort of the questions and comments about the exact operation of this gate, that basically the equipment is able to do whatever we decide to do, but this is the right equipment?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. The equipment is very flexible, and the technology that they have these days.
You're not expecting us to decide what the timing of that is going to be tonight?
No, 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 no. I would expect that I would actually, you know, specify that, and once I roll my sleeves and get those details done, yeah.
But I think if the, if the town has input, or the council, in terms of issues, certainly that's something that could, you know, could be discussed down the road, and obviously may have to be adjusted going forward, once it starts operating, if the council has input into that.
Yeah, and I think we, no matter what, I mean, just knowing, a lot of parking decks are driving into a lot of them, no matter what people do or the technology does, poor driving still is. People will always try to find a way to beat the system, so I'm not sure as much technology as you can put in there.
Yeah.
Sadly.
I've gone under before, so I've kind of tried to beat the system myself, so I know.
I just want it to come down on the car.
Let's, let's, all right, let's finish, if you could finish the presentation.
Okay.
Let's start interrupting.
No, that's, no, no problem, no problem. So the, the other thing that I took a look at and evaluated was, if we had two completely separate entry/exits from actually Third Street coming in to the commuter public and the residential, which is Figure 2?
And that was in response to comments at the last meeting?
Exactly. That was, that was in response to a comment. If that was done, and essentially, if you look at the Figure 2, you can see that what you're doing is you're, you're pushing the potential issues outside of the parking garage at that point in time. So, you know, we did our analysis here to see, you know, number of turns, especially during the evening cross-traffic time, and, and obviously pushing it out onto the street, there's really no mechanism by which you can control it. We, we feel that by implementing the Figure 1 schematic, you know, it's definitely better functional and operational design. So we just showed this to, to show what it, and we had confirmed that as well, obviously with our traffic engineer. So. The other point that was brought up, and it was my last, last point, was security, passive and active security measures, not necessarily operational or functional question, but in terms of our design and parking garages, we want to make sure that you try to maximize the passive security measures as much as possible in the garage. Clear sightlines, that's important from a vehicular standpoint and a pedestrian standpoint once they're on foot. Open stair towers, glass-back elevators, minimal areas within the parking garage where anybody can, can hide, as well as the importance of lighting within the parking garage, and trying to maximize the lighting, but understanding that there's sensitivity to the, the adjacent outside of the parking garage as well. So that, that was something that was brought up, and that's why I addressed it in my, my memo, that we're looking at those design elements as well. So.
One question. Ford, any questions? Mike?
Are you going, what, who's going to monitor the gates? I mean, I, we've all been in parking lots with automated, Michael. We've all been in parking lots with automated gates, and they've either been stuck down.
Right.
I mean, is there a call button?
There is.
Is there going to be a mechanism? I mean, who's going to?
There is, and I think that's being discussed right now in terms of who would actually that respond to, but you're right. So if, if, for example, it gets stuck down, there's an intercom on the gate that, that will, will communicate with somebody.
Somebody on premises?
Somebody on the premises, I would, I would assume, yes.
And what also are you going to do about security with cameras?
Right now, what we're doing is, I may have addressed, yeah, so what we're doing in the parking garage is, is currently making the provisions for the installations of CCTVs within the parking garage. So essentially, when we design cameras, we make sure that we capture the pedestrian entry/exit points and the vehicular entry/exit points, but then also strategically locate those on each level of the garage, so, yes, those, those will be.
Oh, but you said you're making provisions, you're not saying you're going to install them?
Making provisions for, I guess, installation of those cameras.
So you're saying affirmatively that you're going to install the cameras?
I would say, yeah. Yes.
And where would they be monitored?
Well, that's, that's, that's the operational question as well, that goes actually back to who hits the call button, right?
There is just, there will be a management office on the premises, so.
Whether it's a third-party operator, potentially, and I think that's, that's still in the works of the discussion, yeah.
Right, but even, but in other words, there will always, there will be an onsite management office, so even if that's where the contact goes through, there will be a body, a human that.
Well, is that body going to be dedicated to looking at these cameras, or when that body is out for a bathroom break? I mean, it's, it's a free-for-all. How is it going to be monitored? Having experience with parking garage and litigation, it scares the hell out of me if it's not going to be a monitored, safe, secure environment, including lighting.
On page two, to the last paragraph, which talks about the non-gated system for the monthly permit holders and pay-by-space, will the enforcement have to be Village of South Orange, so there'll have to be a dedicated person who responds to that, and that end of the enforcement?
That's correct, that's correct. And I guess that's the, that's, when you, when you have a non-gated system and you do pay-by-space, I mean, that's the one issue, is that you do have to enforce the parking garage, you know? I mean, you can't, obviously, it's, you can't rely that anybody's going to come in, park in a space, hop on the train, come back at the end of the day. It's very easy to do that, you know, because at the end of the day, all you really need to do to try to get out is, you know, go over the detector loop and go out. So, so there's an enforcement aspect to that. Whether that, you know, be tied into the security, or, you know, or a third-party operator?
Gated, without the gate, pay-by-space, is that feasible to pay, does that mean you pay when you come each day, or do you buy it monthly?
For the community?
Yes. I mean, that's, I don't.
It depends on who operates the lot, you know, if it's, if it's the parking authority, they're going to continue with the same system they have now.
Which is what?
You get a hang permit and you pull into, you'll pull in and park, you find your space and park, and you don't leave.
So you park by number?
There's only, only park by number, no, you don't park by number, so we, if they, if there's 100 spaces, they sell 150 permits, because not everybody uses. because not everybody uses it every day, but the...
But it's not paying by space on the site?
But on the 29 spaces, which is a pay-by-number, that you would pay a number at one meter and they would have it on the exit of the garage.
Correct.
To pay by space.
So there's gonna be, there's gonna be a number that are monthly cardholders and then you'll have the pay-by-space in which they'll be required to go to the pay station in the stair elevator lobby in where they're at, yeah.
And there would be, then for after-hours commuting, there'd be for retail and so pack, everyone could use the space. There'd be a certain time after which you...
Most likely, yeah. I mean, it'd be up to whoever's managing the park and how they wanna handle that. So they may wanna say, if it's for so pack, we wanna, or we wanna monitor, we wanna charge a dollar a person, they'll have somebody there and do it.
But the numbers turn over from the commuters at a certain hour, is their bill?
By 7 o'clock, 80% of the commuters are out.
But if we're monitoring it, then I guess we make that decision, or the parking authority would make that decision?
Yeah, how does the parking?
Parking authority is the one with the agreement doing it, but yes. I don't think there's been a final decision on that yet.
That's what I was gonna say. I think there's still, that some of that is in process, that it has to be a cooperative arrangement. There is going to be onsite management, they are going to be working with the parking authority, so some of those decisions are sort of premature. We know what the system can do, but someone's gonna make a decision, particularly in the commuter, how they want it to operate. That's not really our call. Just that the system can accommodate those options.
Danny, sorry.
So if you have two separate gates and you say that on Figure 2, that the confusion is in the outside of the parking garage, and is there any difference between that and the confusion inside the parking garage?
There is, because I guess the confusion outside of the parking garage, if it was pushed to the outside, there's less of an opportunity to actually control it.
Okay.
And it becomes more of a traffic. Exactly. It becomes more of a traffic issue. If that is minimized and inside with the controls that we have just discussed, which will be refined, that's a better option. Thank you. Any other questions, Board, for this witness?
Oh, I did have a question. I think there was, I think there was evidence in the record at one point that the site distance for emerging from the garage was 280 feet. Maybe this is from Mr. Iannelli. I'll wait for him, is he coming back?
Right, that was traffic as opposed to the parking garage design.
Okay. So any other questions for this witness at this point?
I assume whatever equipment that you use here, there's gonna be some sort of universal access for emergency vehicles or park or anybody like that, they'll have keys that can open any of the gates.
Absolutely. Yeah, any type of vehicles that would be coming in here, that would be village-operated or, I mean, they could have different AVI system as well.
In a lot of parking garages, controls are based upon the siren, so, but there's three or four different systems out there these days.
And those don't always work.
And they don't always work. So you have to make sure you get the right one to each municipality, which one you're gonna have, which one they wanna use, which are gonna work that way.
Exactly, that's right. Okay.
Mr. Dwyer, just for housekeeping purposes, this letter was part of the package that was submitted under a cover letter from July 2. So I don't know if you need this marked, it's already been submitted. I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, before you go, any questions from the public for this witness? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lee has already also been sworn. We're gonna be discussing landscape architecture and we will be relying on the July 15 letter and some of the exhibits to that for your reference.
Okay.
Lee White Robb, landscape architect. I believe in front of you, you have a letter dated the 15th of July. And that letter has attached to it three exhibits. And they are marked L100, called Revised Landscape Plan, L120, Revised Illustrative Planting Plan, and L200, paving, I beg your pardon, planting and paving details.
These are the folded exhibits, the oversized 11 by 17 that are attached.
At our last presentation and discussion of the landscape, there were a series of questions and a request as well that we prepare a more detailed planting plan that enumerates the quantities and the species of the plants. We have done that, and that is, as I said, Exhibit B. There was also a discussion about a detail at the street, the metal detail we had. In fact, it was not a metal detail, that was a bluestone detail, and we have eliminated that entirely, that there was a raised bed around the planting on the street trees. That is now gone. The planting is flush. I think there might have also been a question about the planting at the street trees and that is shown on Sheet L100. And the species are primarily grasses, two kinds of grasses, both native and as well perennials. And they are both salt tolerant, chosen for their salt tolerance, and for the most part, they also are generally moisture tolerant, so they can withstand both heavy rains as well as drought. If you'd like, I can go through each one of the questions, but I think that you wanted to move this so that if there are any specific questions, I'm prepared to both refer to them and to answer them specifically.
I think I'd prefer to do that, too, so.
Please.
I have one question.
Sure, please.
Just because I've had experience with this, not in college.
I'm sorry?
And drawing the, you call it ginkgo trees.
Yes.
And haven't had experience with male and female ginkgo trees? Please state what kind you put in there.
The fruitless ones.
Thank you.
Because those who don't know about ginkgo trees, you do not want male and female. There's actually is a funny reference in the New York City AIA guide to a set of ginkgo trees that are in front of the Bank of New York building in Lower Manhattan. And the author, who is a colleague, referred to them as, I think, nine stinky ginkies.
Stinky ginkies, oh, yes.
So, no, they are not. And when they're not, ginkgos are, in fact, incredible trees.
Yes, they are.
Very.
Yes, they are.
Board, do you want to have any questions specifically for this witness, based on what?
It's hard to top that one. I can do it if you'd like.
Susan, do you have anything specifically in response?
There was reference to, there's now artificial lawn.
Yes.
According to, can you, I know that Mr. Abrams is...
He can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I should know better. I know that there was a response, but I, and I understand it's going to be used for outside fitness.
If you, if you, may I?
Yeah, oh, please, yes.
If you look at the drawing L100 on Valley Street and about the middle of the sheet on the right, there's a reference to the Valley Street Fitness, we've called it the Valley Street Fitness Plaza. Inside on that level is the Fitness Center and then there is a paved area and a loggia on top. And right beyond that is a rectangular green space, and that is an artificial turf space. We anticipate that that space will be used in conjunction with the programs and the programming offered by the Fitness Center. Yoga in the mornings or in the afternoon, as opposed to a natural lawn which conceivably could wear down after repeated use. So our suggestion here is to use something that comes as close to real grass and probably some kind of field turf or something like that.
There's another spot of artificial lawn, isn't there?
That's correct. And that is in the courtyard. And again, we anticipate the same kind of activity occurring out in the courtyard where perhaps there is, someone uses a yoga mat, someone does exercise on that softer lawn-like space. And our recommendation and our drawing and design call for an artificial lawn. And I'm sorry, just one more thing. The, that space is viewed from the inside, the Fitness Center, and between the sidewalk and that lawn, there is a hedge as well. So as you're walking by, you don't look directly at the artificial lawn, but there's a hedge between you and that lawn on the sidewalk.
But it's on grade, it's not raised?
No, it's at grade, it's at grade.
And it's a holly tree?
Holly.
It's holly?
The hedge is ilex corna, yes.
Okay. So if somebody falls in that, that's, that's top, well, for those of us that aren't necessarily the most coordinated when we're doing yoga or whatever it may be, I just wanna make sure that it is not something that will be dangerous if somebody falls into...
No, I think it would be dangerous if we use a barberry.
That would be very dangerous.
I don't believe that we have, we have, that we're gonna lose sleep over the holly and actually the lawn is large enough for those people who probably need the kind of space that you referred to that makes the space.
Okay, and you thought that the plantings were better than a low knee wall?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, visually, with the transformer on the north edge and a small privacy wall on the south edge of that, there's a really nice cadence in relationship to the sidewalk of a masonry wall, the hedge, and a masonry wall, as opposed to a longer masonry wall up along the edge of the sidewalk.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board, any other questions? Do we have any questions for this witness from the public? Thank you for answering all of our questions.
Thank you.
I know that there were still some other questions before, well, I don't wanna dictate which way. One of the questions with regards to site distance, would it be acceptable if we finished putting in our direct and then go back and if there are still open issues that we can call the appropriate witness to address those?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Okay, Phil has not yet, you've not... Have you answered the question? We've not yet sworn, Mr. Abrams.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give here this evening is the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Philip Abramson, last name A-B-R-A-M-S-O-N, address 551 Fifth Avenue, 20th, 14th floor, New York, New York.
And Phil, could you please provide, Board, with your qualifications, including any licenses that you hold for whom you're employed, your position, and in what capacity you serve the company?
Sure. I'm an employee and project manager at John F. Rose Companies. I was previously with our planning group and now I'm part of the development group here. Again, I'm a project manager. One of the projects I'm assigned to happens to be this project. I'm also a licensed planner in New Jersey. I'm a graduate of Rutgers Blasting School in 2006. I was licensed as a New Jersey planner in 2008. I have a degree from Rutgers School of Law in Newark in 2011 and I'm licensed to practice as an attorney in New York and pending admission in New Jersey.
And in your capacity as a planner, do you also serve as a municipal planner?
Yes. I'm a, pretty much the majority of my week, I spend as the municipal planner of Morristown, New Jersey, where I do a lot of redevelopment planning. I serve as the board planner for the zoning board and I oversee the board planner for the planning board. And I serve as the municipal planner to the governing body in the mayor's office.
And now, if you can explain what your role is in connection with this application and then start walking us through the type of relief that we're seeking specifically this evening.
So I have been part of this project really since its inception, since the RFP and the redevelopment planning process in conjunction with your planner.
We'll just interrupt you, we'll accept you as an expert if you wanna ask anything.
Thank you.
We do. Sorry, go ahead.
Do you want to ask a question?
No, he wanted, I forgot to ask him to accept you as an expert.
Oh, do you accept me?
I was overwhelmed with your credentials and forgot.
We all were, but we managed to recover in time.
He's going to take my job too and I'll be leaving, so. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, thank you. So, yeah, so I've been involved in this project really since the very beginning, looking at the, you know, working with your board planner and town planner, Ms. Gruehl, to develop the redevelopment plan. And, you know, now as part of developing the site plan, you know, I've worked hand-to-hand with the team that's testified you before you, prior to me, in developing a lot of the strategies and designs that were incorporated into this project. So I'm really gonna talk today primarily about two things as part of my testimony. The first will be, obviously, the variances and the variance relief, which we require, the majority of which have to do with signage. But prior to doing that, there was some, or after that, I will speak to, there was some question about the live-work units and what types of uses could go on under the work definition, where they'll be located, whether they'll be restricted to a certain part of the building. And I do have some slides that will show you that. Speaking of which...
And every time we refer to a slide, we will identify it by number?
If we keep meeting like this, we'll get it down very, if we keep meeting like this, we're gonna get it down to a science.
I don't wanna turn it on.
Square that says blank.
Well, it's definitely blank.
Okay. So I go maybe to the next? Okay, so I'm just gonna scroll to, we put page numbers on this time. My testimony will be... My testimony, just for the record, is starting on page 37, Slide 37 of the presentation that we provided to you at the last year and has been admitted into the record. Okay. So there's really three times, three types of relief that will be required. The first is signage variances, which I will go through in detail. The second is a parking aisle variance, which you've heard about from our garage designer, Todd Helmer, which relates to the relationship between the drive aisles and the parking stall aisles, the width. And then there's almost a technicality, whether it's a design waiver, whether it's not a variance, whether it is a variance on the terraces for the live-work units along Third Street. So the redevelopment plan, as far as signage goes, was organized in a way where we just, the redevelopment plan referred to the village ordinance to regulate all signage. And the, the village ordinance is not necessarily compatible and didn't necessarily envision this type of project. It's, this is a mixed-use project. The signage ordinance really creates regulations for each type of use but does not really ever say explicitly that all these uses would coexist in a single building and therefore all these signage requirements would be applicable all at once. So what we really had to do was go through the ordinance, find the piece that most closely matched the use that we were anticipating and apply that standard. And if we did need relief from it for one reason or another, we've included it here. We spoke with the village engineer, Mr. Renda, and the board planner, Ms. Gruehl, in trying to find what the village typically does with these situations when we're not part of a mixed-use project. What we did, and this chart was, has not yet been submitted, but it is... What we did, and this chart was, has not yet been submitted, but it is integrated into the signage plan that our architect, Tordi, Tordi Galas, prepared. This actually has been updated since we did our public notice, because in reviewing it with the attorney, we did find some better ways of interpreting the ordinance. So as a, as part of the compliance, you know, I would suggest, and I think we'd all agree, that it should be updated, the signage plan should be updated to reflect the standards contained in the chart that I'm, I'm passing out this evening.
So we would therefore ask if we could mark that as a new exhibit, just to be clear?
Yes.
Yeah. Why are we up two?
So...
Eleven?
Eleven. A eleven? Thank you.
So in the ordinance, there's, there's two main chapters that deal with signage for the, for the types of uses that will, are anticipated for this building. And it's section one ninety-two dash one sixty-two, which regulates signage for commercial districts or retail uses, and section one ninety-two dash one sixty-three, which regulates signage for, for multifamily dwellers. So we've, we've tried to look at this project as a whole and to, you know, be as clear as possible for the public when, when this building comes to life and people are using it. So where, where is the ingress and egress for the retail? Where's the ingress and egress for the parking deck? Where's the ingress and egress for the future tenants? And really, the signage was designed with that in mind, to make it as clear and convenient as possible for residents, future residents. At this time, we have submitted a signage plan that does not include the specific graphics. Really what we're saying is, these are the largest the signs can be, and this is what we'll design too. This is if we had done this work as part of the redevelopment planning process, which, you know, in retrospect, I think we all would agree, we wish we did. But, so this is basically saying, here's our, our standards, and we can talk later about what happens after this and what that process will look like.
Phil, if we just can, I think we call this A eleven. We'll put today's date on it, if that's okay, and identify it as signage relief chart?
So what the, what this signage chart, we see that there's a few rows that break across the entire table, and those are the uses that I was talking about, multifamily residential, parking deck, retail, and the live-work units. And they're all kind of treated differently under the ordinance, and we're treating them differently here in terms of how we are proposing to regulate them. So now, I'm gonna go back a few slides. It was, this is still remaining the same presentation that was given at our, at the prior hearing. I'm gonna go back to page, I think it's seventeen of this presentation, to kind of give a rundown and to give some context for where these signs are located with on the facade, on the various facades of the buildings. So does this... Okay, so the various types of signs are residential entry signs?
So page seventeen that's on the screen now is one of the slides that was referred to by the architect at the last meeting. Is that, this was part of the architect's testimony?
Yes, it was.
This slide?
Yes. So what we're showing here on the, the bottom of this page, this is slide sixteen of the, of the presentation that was given, put in the record last, last hearing. The residential entrance is at the, aligns with the base of this turret feature, and that's one of the main residential entrances. And the other residential entrance is closer to Sloan Street, right next to the, basically the vehicular entries to the parking deck. So when I talk about the residential entry signs, there will be two types of signs that we're talking about for that. That's one over a canopy that says the name of the project on it, and then maybe a couple plaques right next to it, whether they're to designate this is a lead silver building, maybe the name, you know, when it was developed with the addresses, things like that. And then there'll be, and those are the, the wall-mounted signs. We're also proposing a blade sign to help vehicular identification. And that blade sign, well, these are the entries to the garage.
You're on slide seventeen now.
I'm on slide seventeen now. And over the garage, we're, we're talking about between the second and the third stories to put a blade sign that projects out, it'll be parallel to Valley, perpendicular to Third Street. So when you're coming down and you're negotiating that, that slope down from Valley to Third, you'll be able to see exactly where the deck is, and it's just a feature to help you, future parkers identify where that is. And then the, we're gonna, I'm gonna go back one, slide sixteen from the prior presentation. So the anticipated retail area is right here under these two gable roofs, and these are the retail windows. At this point, we anticipate one tenant occupying that full three thousand square feet. If, it, it could be split to two conceivably, so there would be two signs, you know, one for each tenant, but we're, assuming it's one tenant, there'll be one sign on Third, oh, I'm sorry, one sign on Valley, and also one sign on the exposure that's, that faces Third, that's, you know, parallel to, to Third Street. And then finally, the other type of sign that we're talking about is, on the, now this is page seventeen of the prior presentation, there, these are the live-work units that I'm circling.
And which street do they face?
That they face Third Street. And they're act, you know, we'll talk a little bit later in my testimony about how they're sunken below the, the grade of the street in, in certain areas, and that they'll each, we wanted to give the opportunity to give this type of use the best shot that it has, so that really requires a little bit of signage to help people identify that are looking for that, you know, professional user, to identify where that is. So we're talking about a small plaque right next to the, those doors.
All right, now let me ask you, Phil, when you identify the signs with regard to the retail uses, we looked at the standards in the ordinance with regard to commercial or retail uses, is that correct?
Yes, and, and, yeah, so we always looked, we did everything we could to tie, to make basically analogies to what would have been permitted in the ordinance had this not been part of this larger project. And, you know, work-live units are kind of new, and there is a home office provision, and there's also this, basically a conversion where it's a, it was a residential building and now we're using it as office. And so we, we actually used that one because it felt like it made a little bit more sense. The only one, the only thing that you, we were, the ordinance permits you to do in a home office use is to just have a sign out, you know, a freestanding sign out front. We didn't think, this wasn't the type of environment where you, it's not a single-family home, you're not gonna see a freestanding sign in the front lawn, so we, we went to the one that really looked at wall-mounted plaques.
All right, and in terms of the entrance signs, we looked at the standards for multifamily in the zone?
Yes.
In the ordinance, rather? And that's how we came to what the standard was and what we sought relief from?
Yes, we, we looked at section, and this was per Ms. Gruel's recommendation, section ninety-two dash one sixty-three, A two A, which regulates signage within the residential C one and PRD districts. And, and I'll get to a little bit in a second about, actually, I should probably do that now. That we were looking to do two twelve-square-feet signs over the entrance door. That, that, this type of sign is not expressly permitted, because it's over the, an entrance canopy, and the only permitted entrance canopy signage in South Orange is over a movie theater. So this is a little different. It's not a typical wall sign. It's gonna be on the edge of, of a, of a canopy. And we, yes, and they're, and they're slightly, so, and you're usually only allowed to have one, we're requesting two, and that the, the ordinance requires it to be illuminated by external means, and we're proposing that it's illuminated by a halo backlit type lettering. And then the, the wall-mounted residential signs, which are the plaques that I was referring to, it's the same relief provision above. Now we're talking about three plaques, about two hundred square inches each, for a total of six hundred square inches, and that two would be located at the main entrance of the building at the corner of Valley and Third, and one would be located further down Third towards Sloan Street. And that this actually, you know, since they're all wall signs, essentially, it, it triggers more relief. The blade sign is relief from section ninety-two dash one sixty-two, B three E, and that's to permit a blade sign projecting from the parking facility. The only blade signs permitted under the, the village's ordinance are, are really the kind of retail signs that you'd think of. I think there's some across the street here on Scotland Road, and they're small retail signs. We're talking about really a forty, a squared, forty-square-foot sign that's above, between the second and third stories, and you, we really need that to be able to see it from Valley Street. So it's, you know, again, it's the, we found the closest thing possible, but it is bigger and, and will be mounted taller than a typical blade, retail blade sign, which is located right above the first story of the building. And then the, the retail sign on, that's, that faces Third Street, the village permits a sign for every facade as long as it's thirty feet long. We're at twenty-eight feet long on that facade. We think it's important. You know, we talked about this as a gateway, and the redevelopment plan talks about this as a gateway in and out of town, that when you're, you know, driving out of town, you should be able to see it. And this, this will permit another, the retailer to have another door, you know, kind of that corner location, to advertise their location on both sides. And then, again, the wall sign for the live, live-work units, we're talking about six plaques, no more than five square feet each, and only one sign is permitted in this type of building, but we're talking about one sign per tenant for a total of six, six potential signs. And, you know, the arch, the architect in his previous testimony at the last hearing really did go into a lot of detail regarding the intent and design of the signs. I also have another exhibit, which I'll introduce shortly, that gives some visual example of the types of signs we're talking about to give the board a flavor. So I'm gonna just get into the, put the variance proofs on the record. These all fall under the flexible C two statutory language under NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash seventy C two. For the sake of efficiency, I'm not gonna go back through each one of those variances and lay proofs down for each. I'm just gonna kind of lay the proofs down, that there's five elements for a C two variance, and where there's, where they're applicable to each of the signs, I will do my best to highlight that. So the first element for the C two variance is that the justifications that we're making relate to a specific piece of property. This is a redevelopment plan, it's, you know, legally permissible spot zoning in many ways, so this would not be applicable to really anywhere else in town, because we're talking about a mix of uses that's permitted otherwise uniquely in South Orange. And many of the, the variances that we're talking about are being driven also by the corner location of the property and by the topographic conditions of Third Street. Element two is that the purposes of the MLUL Municipal Land Use Law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirement, and the following purposes are, are furthered by allowing the signage to proceed as proposed. The zoning purpose is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. This signage package, and as it relates to the larger development program, we're talking about really a state-of-the-art mixed-use development, redevelopment project. It's been through a redevelopment planning process vetted by this board and the, the governing body of the municipality, and it's been carefully designed with green development techniques and great architecture. The signs will ensure harmony among the mixed-use components that might otherwise lead to confusion or, you know, unfamiliarity, so this really does clarify it. The work-live units represent a, a creative development technique. It provides an active street frontage without necessarily having retail, but it, it does provide some articulation of those facades, and it's, it's unique economic development strategy that is not common, really, in, in northern New Jersey, and especially in municipalities like this. And the inclusion of the publicly accessible parking facility is a, a prime example of an innovative public-private partnership. Prior to this project, all the public lots in South Orange were, were really publicly owned, and they're all surface lots. And some, the variances, insofar as they're being driven by the existence of a public parking deck on-site, are, are, will further serve that purpose of, of zoning. The next purpose of zoning is to encourage the location and design of transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic while, while discouraging the location of such facility routes that will result in congestion or blight. So we're talking about a TOD project here. It's, it's both residential and parking, and these signs further the purposes of that. The signage is driven by the mixed-use nature of the project, which is, you know, we know that the land use mobility connection is very important, and having mixed uses prohibits people, or removes the need for people to make vehicular trips, that this actually creates safe access for people driving and walking to the garage, and that these are all pedestrian-scale signs, so it will enhance the walkability of the streets where we're located. Element three is that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. These variances are, are largely technical in nature. We're not talking about, you know, use, use-type variances, these are bulk-type variances. They're appropriate for the size of the building. They're largely in line with what's permitted under your ordinance now, and the ordinance really does have, you know, strong methodologies that say the size of the sign is directly related to the size of the facade or the length of the facade. So that's how we've calculated them here. And that the, the uses that we're talking about are as of right under the redevelopment plan, and the signage really comes part and parcel with those uses. The primary detrimental, detrimental impact that you consider with signage is, is what we call visual clutter. However, the signs here, and visual clutter, think about Route ten or Route eighteen, where, you know, there's sign competition, and people, they have a ten-foot high, the other guy's gonna have a fifteen-foot high, and this is not the consequence of the types of signs we're talking about. These are very discreet, very tasteful signs, and they're inoffensive, and they don't set a precedent, undesirable precedent for, for Third or Valley Streets. Element four is that the community benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment, and that there are, there are really very few negative impacts to allowing the signage to proceed as proposed, so, you know, I would argue that this burden is easily met. And element five, finally, the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Again, these variances are largely technical in nature. The redevelopment plan, which permits the uses that are associated with the signage, are as of right and through the redevelopment plan, and that redevelopment plan supersedes the zoning ordinance, and that the, the nature and character do not substantially impair, and, nor do they really substantially deviate from what would be permitted if these mix of uses were, were existing on their own. Okay, so that's the signage variances. Should I have questions? Do you, I mean, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to have questions after each variance type and then talk about parking with?
Yeah, I think let's, let's pause there.
Okay.
And if there are any questions from the board on the signage variances?
My, my, my big concern is about the park sign, which, which they have here. This is a garage where ninety-four percent of the people, or are they gonna be permit holders or residents? I don't really need, think we need to advertise that it's a parking garage, it's like kind of obvious to everybody there. You could have a blade sign under the current ordinance, that's just a small sign, with just a P on it, and would be enough, because I don't know who you're thinking is gonna be going into this garage. It's not like a New York City parking garage where they're trying to attract people.
Sure.
And if anything, I would rather minimize that, the whole parking sign. We don't have anything like it in the village, and I just don't think it fits this building. I think it'll take away from the other signs, especially the size and the way it looks in this picture. To me, it's way too big, and I just don't think it's needed.
We're happy to explore a reduction in that. It really comes down to where vehicles can see it as they're entering Valley, you know, as we discussed during Mr. Hummer's...
Who's going here? There's only people who are even gonna do it, no parking.
Well, during Mr. Hummer's testimony, we talked about, you know, hourly parking, and people coming for, for dinner, for Sopac, and it might be good while they're driving around to be able to see it. If, you know, if the board feels otherwise, you're the expert in the local conditions here, and...
Okay. I'll attempt to ask the board.
Any other questions? Yeah?
I just wanna associate myself with that and think that there's no need for any parking sign.
Sure.
I'll add a thought here. I think that one of the major problems with our downtown is we don't have enough signs for parking. I think a lot of people who visit the town have a tremendous amount of trouble finding parking in South Orange. Now, like Mark said, and most people that are going here are commuters, so they do, you know, they already know where the lot is. And my, my only kind of question would be that the direction that this is facing might be better to face it down, so you can see it down Sloan Street. People coming from Valley, there's not really gonna be a lot of people coming from Valley that are gonna, or, that are gonna make that turn down Third Street, but there'll definitely be people down on Sloan Street, you know, you know, driving around in a circle, and they see a park sign at the end, they may just go down there to park for shopping, so that would be, you know, kind of my, my comment on it.
Yeah, and we haven't engaged a sign vendor yet, we don't have a signage designer. Really, we wanted to come to this board and get, you know, your blessing essentially on the size and location and types of signs before we engaged in that exercise. So the good news is, we, we do have a lot of flexibility to incorporate these ideas and concerns.
Maybe part of the, the approach could be a combination, maybe a small P, as you're saying, but more importantly, thinking our downtown there is just simply wayfinding.
Yes. Yes.
Once you're there, you'll find it, it's getting there.
Right. It's, wayfinding signs would be more important than anything else. If you put them down there and have an idea of where the various parking garages and locations are by wayfinding, a small P on the building identifies where it is, and people will be fine. Anything bigger than that, I think it's just.
This project will be managed in conjunction with the South Orange Parking Authority, so if they have a logo or something that we could use that people are, that residents are familiar with, and it's iconography for them, then.
They have a logo, and they have a consistent sign system throughout the village.
Right. I'm glad we broke for this set of questions, 'cause this, the dam would've broken, I don't think Mark would've held us in any longer. Susan, do you have any questions?
Well, I happen to agree that it probably should be a bit smaller, and my only other question is whether there is a need for.
Microphone.
There is, whether there is a need for two signs for the retail, I understand there has to be at least one sign per retail, but whether there's a need for signage on the awning end on the wall, that just seems to be a bit overkill.
Yeah, if I can address that, we actually, one of the changes that are made in this plan, I think it was maybe as a result of our conversation, you know, we're willing to stipulate that a retail tenant has a choice either or, they don't get both the wall sign and the awning sign, so that's, we're happy to do that.
Okay. That's good.
I'm just really curious, the, the list of variances, since some of what you've provided tonight is new, I'm just curious, I mean, normally, the, the board gets a list of variances in advance, the professionals review them, so that they know that it's a complete list, and I just wanna confirm that that's sort of the look I expected you were gonna have, which is, have you had a chance to review all of these to determine whether or not it is in fact all the variances that would be required for this? Or, Patrick, I don't know if he has either.
I had the same question with Susan, because I'm not sure if we got this information in the earlier, so I was gonna ask Susan the same question, if you had a chance, could it be what they say, or the signage.
Well, they've put, you know, I can't, I, yes and no. Okay, let me, let me just put it this way, okay? I, I have had an opportunity to review what the previous A11 was, or what it is. It is difficult to relate that and be able to review these in this scale to determine whether it matches, but to the extent that this chart, A11 is comprehensive, it's, it is comprehensive, I think it lays out everything, and to the extent, and we've made some general comment that they have to assure that all of the plans match. So to the extent that they have to revise the plans to reflect what is in this A11 chart, well, I believe that the applicant will do that. So I'm not sure I answered the question, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're just, they're, they're, I mean, I don't, did you actually count the number of, total number of variances that you're?
We believe that there's six. And, you know, to, just to kind of clarify, I know that when I say that I'm submitting something new here at table, it's always a little nerve-wracking. The only real new variance that, that wasn't in the plans that were submitted July, right before July 4th, is, and there's no new signs, put it that way. We've, we've looked at different ways of characterizing them to be more accurate with the ordinance.
Turn the mics up.
Hello? I don't know if you heard that.
We heard it, we can hear everything.
Okay.
Susan, had you not identified the terraces as a possible variance, terraces on Valley? That is, that is.
Oh, yes.
I stopped at signage.
Yes, this is only the signage piece. I believe that there will be testimony on those other.
I'm just, 'cause there are, there are six variances, and the six variances are based upon an interpretation of, I mean, it's very persuasive at face value, I, but I'm just saying, it seems based upon interpretations of which things might apply because it makes the most sense, because the rules aren't absolutely there. What I'm saying is that there's a lot of interpretation there, and, I mean, if you agree with all the interpretation, that's fine, if you don't agree with it in part or in whole, then that's something that I'd like to know, and I, maybe I missed it, maybe you offered that somewhere in writing, but I, that's what I, especially because of our change, I wanna hear that.
Okay, that's what you're saying. That, there are no, there are no very precise, you're correct, there is some interpretation the way that the ordinance is structured. I agree to the extent that you can categorize these, I would say that these are the best categories of how you would define these.
So, and you, are there any other variances which could, which are triggered here, or is the list of six that we've been provided a full and complete list of the best of your study?
Well, again, to the best of my understanding, this is what they're requesting. If there are any other signage, if there's any other signage that would be shown on any site plans or elevations, then they wouldn't be permitted, and when they would come to Sal for, for permits, then that would trigger.
But, just to be clear, I'm not asking whether or not there are going to be any other signs which they might look at doing after the fact, I'm asking if, I'm asking if the, given the current signage plan has been presented by the applicant, whether or not the list of variances that have been provided is in fact the accurate and comprehensive list. We're not dealing with one, we're not dealing with two, we're dealing with six, we're dealing with, we're dealing, and that's why I'm just trying to make sure that when we give our approval, and we have to list the variances, I mean, that's, that's a requirement, so.
Sure.
Is, is the list that's being provided by the applicant a complete list, it's a comprehensive list, is that, is that an accurate statement, or is there something that is, is missing from this list, or, I just wanna confirm that as a board member, because I'm not in a position personally to be able to evaluate.
To go and check, yeah.
That element, that's what I'm trying to understand.
May I interject just for, for one second?
Sure.
Really, there's, I didn't count how many sign types, but there's only one sign type here that doesn't require a variance, so we really did err on the side of caution, and as Ms. Gruel explained, we have to live with this, and when we go, or our tenants go to Mr. Renta to get a sign permit, we wanna make sure that, no matter, you know, who's there and who's looking at it, that it could really be interpreted as singularly as possible. So it's in our interest to have clarity as well, so I appreciate what you're saying. And so, again, there's, we've requested variances on almost every type of sign we're putting up, there's only one sign, that's the awning sign, where a variance isn't requested.
Yes, and you have plans, you have the, to the extent that there are plans that reflect where they're going to be, and the chart, that is what they're requesting, that's where they are, and what they're also saying is, is they can't give any more detail at this point in time, because they don't know what those details are.
Right. I think, I think the working methodology, you expressed it here, I think it's clear, I think normally it's a little bit more concise, so I think in a way, we're sort of struggling with, we're asking for this, you know, and written out, but I think when, if we get to it and we get to a resolution, we can dictate with your, perhaps, your help, whatever those variances are, so.
Your wall plaques, for our own sake, we were saying they can't exceed 600 square inches.
That's all, all, aggregate.
In the aggregate.
In the aggregate.
In the aggregate, okay.
Otherwise, that's pretty big.
In the aggregate.
Are you taking, are you taking the projecting sign variance off the table now?
I mean, we, we're willing to reduce, we're not gonna reduce down to four feet, I, I think that that would not be appropriate for the scale of the building. I think that we could reduce it from 40 feet, though, 40 square feet.
I think we'll, let's get to that when we start acting on your application.
Yes, sir.
So why don't we go, I think you made it clear what the issues are with your signage, why don't we go to the other variances?
Thank you. So I'm just, really quickly, I'm just gonna go through the two more variances that we have, and it's the, the parking aisle variance, Mr. Helmer talked about it. The relief is required from the parking circulation section of the redevelopment plan to permit 90-degree parking spaces that are eight and a half feet wide, the spaces, in a width, in where the, where the aisle is 23 feet wide, and that where the plan requires that all of these 90-degree spaces be, when there's a, that they have to be, I'm sorry, let me start over, all these numbers are getting very, the relief is required from the parking circulation section of the redevelopment plan to permit 90-degree parking spaces to be eight and a half feet in width by 18 feet in depth, where the aisle is proposed to be 23 feet, where the plan requires that all the 90-degree spaces to be nine feet in width by 18 feet in depth, if the aisle is less than 23 feet in width. This variance condition was really triggered as part of the overall design program, so basically what it means is that we're six inches, however you wanna look at it, either one foot less on the aisle, or, or one, six inches less on the space. And again, this is a flexible C variance. When Ms. Gruel and I were discussing this, we thought one of the important things that I mentioned to the board is that this is not one of the, what they call a short-span design, these are long spans, there will not be columns, you know, rhythm of columns in the deck, so it's not like you're gonna be in a parking space and then having to see a car coming, you know, down the aisle and trying to look on the other side of a column, these are open, wide-open decks. So again, I'm gonna run through these flexible C, C2 variances, under NJSA 40 dash, 40:55 dash 70C2. Again, element one, that the justification must relate to a specific piece of property, and here, that these development programs relate specifically to the standards of the Third and Valley redevelopment plan. Element two, that the purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced by allowing this deviation to occur, and there are two purposes that we identified, and the first is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design. Really, the two things that were, are design constraints for the parking deck and what it, the dimensions, interior dimensions, was the fact that we had to wrap it in a residential, you know, wrapper that there's residential in it, so you won't be able to see it if you're on Third or Valley Street, so that created a, a width dimension, and then the board, in, as we were working on the redevelopment plan, asked for a setback along the rails to maybe do a bike path in the future, so we initially, we then kind of crunched in, in certain spaces, the deck, in order to accommodate that. And that, you know, again, this is to provide a, a transportation benefit for the area by creating a TOD and residential parking project. Element three is the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and that on June 19th, Mr. Helmer, our garage designer and architect, testified these are really relatively minor deviations, they're generally acceptable in, in parking garage design, and so there are really very little negative impact. Element four is that the community benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment, seeing, again, as there are very few negative impacts by the six-inch difference, but, you know, I believe in my opinion that it's reasonably, it's easily met. And element number five is that the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan, or redevelopment plan for that matter, and the redevelopment plan supersedes the zoning ordinance, and that plan was the, was what required all these additional design constraints. So that's my proofs for the parking. The last proofs I have for the record are the terraces on, on Third Street, so I can just keep going if nobody has any questions.
I have a question just for us. Unless my memory doesn't serve me, which is possible, I know, I don't know, are we planning on finishing all of this tonight with them? Jonathan Roest, I just remember that, I thought we had kind of scheduled them for just the beginning part of the meeting, so we could totally finish the in-hall tonight, and I just worry that we're not on track to do that. So I don't wanna put one thing off, just, but I don't know if we're gonna finish this anyway, so I just wanna defer and just ask you.
I think we were gonna play it by ear to about now or a little later, so I think it's worth hearing this testimony, and then as a board, if we have several questions that we either have answered or unanswered, we can make a judgment, but I think we can give ourselves a little more time.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is clearly gonna take a lot of time for Jonathan Roest, I mean, we need at least another hour and a half, probably, because we have the questions, we're gonna hear them, we have to put together the resolution and so forth.
Right.
And so, and to Alex's point, if this was seating halls meeting, and we started this half an hour earlier, to meet it, then we.
Both applicants are aware that this was a busy night, and that we're gonna do our best for both, so they've been, they've been notified, so I think at the very least, let's finish with your testimony.
Sure.
And, and then we can, we can take temperature, see what we're.
I'll agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the next slide, and really the last type of relief that we're requesting is, what you have, what I'm showing you here with this slide, this is page 40 of the plan, the presentation that was provided at the last hearing. The top of this page is the sidewalk along Third Street, and then there are some terraces that will be, in some places, you know, kind of five feet below the sidewalk, in some places, they'll be almost level with the sidewalk, because they follow the grade of Third Street. So, you know, these might not be variances at all, because the redevelopment plan does require any stoops or porches to be raised two feet above, except for ADA compliance is required. There are different types of ADA accessibility requirements for new construction when it's, there's a non-residential component potentially, and, you know, this actually is, creates a flat surface for a, you know, a wheelchair-bound person to access directly from the sidewalk. So, but, you know, be that as it may, we're gonna try to get this on the record, we don't think it's a, a variance variance, we think it's a design waiver, because it's from that portion of the redevelopment plan, and the standard for design waivers is that the planning board, when acting upon applications for preliminary and final site plan approval, shall have the power to grant such exceptions from the redevelopment site plan, is to be reasonable for the general purpose and intent of the site plan review, and if the literal enforcement would be, of the provision would be impractical or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions, because of peculiar conditions relating to the landing question. And we have a site here with these significant topographic constraints, the, there's almost a full, over one-story difference between the Sloan Street elevation and the Valley Street elevation, and to accommodate this shift, we've designed the building to create, you know, almost a terracing effect, and this, this patio system is, is part of that, and that this will direct, you know, create a unique front door to these work-live units. And the primary intent with, of the raised stoops typically is to provide some visual interest, which, in my opinion, this does, and to provide some privacy for a, a direct-entry configuration, and this, this could, does do both of those things, because of the landscaping that will be created to shield the, the windows and front doors along those units. And again, in, in recognition of accessibility concerns, we felt like this was the most responsible design strategy. So that, that's really the, the explanation for the terraces. And just really quickly, for the work-live units, questions have come up, and the hatch units, this is again that same drawing, these are the only work-live units in the building, there'll be no more than six of them. We're talking about professional office services, art and media production, gallery space, arts and crafts production, and accessory retail related directly to those types of uses, and that it should only be on the first floor, and that the live area must be directly connected to the work area, and that the maximum square footage of the work area may not exceed 800 square feet.
And Phil, even though we've characterized these as exceptions or waivers, given the way the design has been articulated, are there, is there any detrimental impact to the design?
No, I mean, I think that the, you know, having direct-entry units, the reason you want them raised off the ground, again, is to provide some, some visual interest and articulation of the street facade, and to provide privacy for those units, because if they're right on the ground, then you're looking right into somebody's kitchen or something like that. This achieves that by, by combining landscaping with topography, where the eye level of the person walking down the street will actually be looking above the first story, or if they are looking near the first story, there'll be a significant landscape upper to block them.
Thank you. Subject to additional questions, that would complete our direct, we know there may be questions, and we certainly have our witnesses available to answer them, but in terms of direct testimony.
Do we have any questions for this witness forward? Pub, Michael?
You're looking for a variance for parking, ideally parking on 90, on, on parallel parking, there's nine by 18, 62 on seven with a double line. Our ordinance provides nine by 18 by 60. You're now looking for even less than that, and that's tight for a parking spot. If you even try and maneuver in one of our garages, that's even less than that, it is difficult in terms of banging doors and also maneuvering. Aren't you asking for, just creating more of a dangerous situation by keeping, reducing the standards?
Yeah, I mean, we, we. Yeah, I mean, we feel comfortable based on our design and best practices. It's really a six-inch difference, which I understand that sex interest can be a lot in this circumstance. But, you know, we feel comfortable with the design as proposed.
What's the Morristown Garage by Century 21?
No, no, generally, as we have it right now, with eight foot six, eight foot six wide spaces, that's what you see as common in the industry right now, in many parking garages. Really, the variance, when it comes down to it, is the drive aisle. We have it at 23, where it would be 24. So really, we're looking for a, you know, a six-inch, you know, between each drive. The most concern that I actually had was at the end bays, which we do comply to greater than a 24. I feel pretty comfortable on the straight runs where we're at right now, with a 23-foot dimension on the drive aisle and 18-foot stalls. Where you have the two cars turning at the end bay is where we want to really make sure that we have a dimension that's comfortable. And that's obviously greater than what the ordinance requires, so.
I don't necessarily agree with you, especially with the use of SUVs being proliferated today. I mean, eight by six by, by 18 with 23-foot aisle drives makes it a little bit difficult.
Tom, if you didn't have the six-inch variance, what's the differential in the number of parking places available?
The differential between the eight-six and-
Well, there's X number of parking places, 200 and some parking places.
If we were fully conforming to nine foot, it could be, you know, a 5% variance.
So we'd lose 5% of the parking places.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tom?
Yes.
I have some questions on this lead thing they just gave us.
Who would address those while we're, I think we can-
Well, I didn't know what the question was about.
We have a few lead questions. So I would, just before he begins, I think that this evening was always going to be a complicated evening because we had two very important applications in front of us. And we've been, the intent was to accommodate both tonight. And I think our feeling at this point, and has when we came in, is that we will do the best we can to hear as much as we can from each applicant. But I believe that we will have to continue on to August. At least we got a bunch of work done tonight. Now, I mean, I definitely recognize how much time you spent and how much time you have coming here, but this is a very important project for us. And I think there is, you know, I think we're close. And, but I think there are a few still questions in our board's mind and also to process all the new information. You know, one of the problems is that we get this information a day before, given the shortness of the time and everything. So that's again, why I feel that we need to do this.
Well, let me ask you this. Do you want our witness, we do have the witness to address the leads question. I guess a number of things that we need to ask if-
We need everybody back.
Who do we need to bring back? Obviously, there are things you want to look at. And I know it was, our last response was close. We were trying to respond to your consultants who were good enough to get a response to our July 2 submission.
Right.
But we're trying to figure out where we are and where we're going to be.
Yeah.
And I guess one other question that we would put out there, while we appreciate the fact that there's still discussion about the variances, I don't know what your practice is, but while there's often vote and memorialization, there is also a practice where counsel can be directed to draft, prepare a draft resolution for the board to be discussing so that we all have a handle on the conditions that we're, that we might be dealing with or need to discuss, to try to cut downtime.
We might be able to try to address the conditions issue ahead of time, but before the vote, it's not my practice. And Professor Cox, rather than against drafting the resolution prior to the vote, as you know.
No, you wouldn't be surprised to know I don't often agree with the late Professor Cox, right? Being on this side of the day.
Well, you're probably the only two that intensely read them, so we can't even-
Sad to say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we clarify at this point? I would like to have a sense of what it is that is left to be done as it relates with this application. Meaning, I believe we've heard the last witness, is that correct, counsel?
As far as direct, subject to a right of recall if new issues come up, of course.
So what we're left with at this point is whatever questions Eli might have on a relatively new subject of lead certification, which, well, I won't go into how-
Well, I think there's still questions we have of the traffic consultant. I think we have some, a few issues there. And I think we have our deliberation. But as Alex said, I think we had asked that we make sure we have time for both applicants to-
I'm going to have questions also about the workspace, you know, in terms of, there's some very specifics that seem to go a little bit further than what I originally thought it was going to be, mostly about the production studio, arts and crafts production, because that can mean a lot of different things.
That would seem to lend itself to the fact that the, that the witness who was just up, who, by the way, we didn't have any, the public was not asked whether or not-
I thought I made that clear, but I'll do it again.
Maybe I didn't assert it, but didn't hear it. But it sounds like Mr. Ross's questions are for the witness who just left, and maybe his testimony is not yet complete. But it, I mean, what I'm trying to figure out is, okay, so, but at least for the benefit of the applicant, who we're asking to come back, meaning, because they have all these different professionals, they don't, I'm assuming we're going to suggest-
I would think at this point, the planner and the traffic. I think we're, do we need garage again?
Well, the garage and the traffic are two different witnesses.
Right. I think we were okay.
We still haven't solidified, I don't think, all the controls in the garage. I don't think we've solidified generators, which are, I think was a recommendation be put in, and they're not going to be put in, the way I read the papers that were sent. So I still think there's a lot of procedural. And I don't know who addresses it.
Do we issue them to them?
I mean, maybe you don't need everybody to address it. Maybe it's just management addresses it.
I think, you know, we've developed a certain list of certain items, and so I think we need to at least get those answered in-
All right. Well, I, not to be argumentative, but I think those have been between the most recent submission and the previous submissions. I've gone through some of the list, and I think that those are, that you have them. We can certainly confirm them, but I think most of them are addressed either in the written submissions or in the testimony. If there's questions with traffic, we need to know, are they the parking garage? That's one witness. If there are still questions with traffic, again, there were comments, certainly. And I think, again, I know the questions with regard to the crosswalk signage, those have been put in writing, and there are things that have been submitted. Certainly, you could have more questions on them, but again, we think that those have been addressed unless someone tells us they have not. So we're just trying, we also want to get a handle on who we're bringing.
Right.
And what the scope of that might be.
Well, I think we could, we could post this meeting, we can assess what has or has not been addressed. But at this point, without being too much of a hardship, I think certainly the planner, and then if you can, traffic and garage, and I think we can wrap this up. I don't think landscape needs to come back, you know, he's very clear on that. I think it's always makes sense to the architects here, when we're going to have questions, again, back to the architect. So, I mean, I know it's the third meeting, but, you know, it's unusual for this community to be this busy into fourth.
What?
But I think that, I think that's kind of the consensus on the board, is that we're, there's a lot on our plate, and we may need time to chew over and ask a few more questions and then wrap it up.
I think so. We will be able to talk about conditions if that becomes part of the discussion. We can exchange ideas about that and have a problem with that.
Obviously, we were trying to, to try to cut down from, now we're talking about two additional meetings, meaning one additional meeting, hopefully to get to a vote, and then a resolution subsequent to that. So before we start the appeal period, we're really talking about assuming we are granted an approval. We're just trying to move that forward. What kind of timeframe, what are we, when is the next meeting?
It's August.
Is it an available meeting?
Yes.
Or should we be talking about a special meeting?
No.
You just carried something to August, correct? Didn't you just carry, was that to September? Nothing was, okay.
We do have what is probably a very brief application by PSCNG to move one of their transformers on a lot, which is going to be heard for completeness. Going to be heard for completeness. And it may actually be heard by the board because they promised us it's brief, and South Orange likes to have their lights on, so they may want to hear that.
I wish we had that kind of leverage. What is the date of the August meeting?
Ojetti, what is the date of the August meeting?
August 5.
August 5.
Mr. Chairman?
So can we ask that the chairman make the decision to move this continuance till August 5?
Can we check if our consultants, I don't mean to be, we just need to know that we have the consultants you've asked for available that night. Can we check?
Well, it's a normal meeting, as I remember.
Mr. Chairman, as I'm not, as I have not been participating in the Seton Hall application, I really don't know the answer to this question. Is, I don't know how much there is left to go in the Seton Hall application, meaning, are we going to be doing the same thing with the Seton Hall application tonight?
It's possible.
So we could be back in exactly the same situation at the August meeting?
Well, I think that, you know, yes, on the face of it, but I think we've reduced half into quarters, and I think it's, they're both doable next time. I said, this is a little unique, you know, this size applications that are coming in the summer, we can go a year without anything like this. So what we're trying to do is be careful for both our applicants and digest everything we can, so.
We appreciate that. Our architect is not available on August 5.
No one from his office could make it?
No, we can have someone else, but what we were going to ask, if it's possible, since he has the greatest familiarity with it, is it possible for the, we know that someone has specific questions with regard to the lead certification, if those could be provided to the, through your secretary to us, we can certainly make sure that the people with the most knowledge can deal with that and be prepared to respond, unless you want to ask those tonight while Mr. Looney is here. For the, if it's a few minutes, we could certainly have him do that now.
Do our experts have lots of questions left? We haven't heard from them.
I don't know, lots of questions. Every question takes five minutes. We could be at around a half on this.
If we keep pushing things off, because, I mean, we're just going to allow less time for our next applicant.
That's right.
We also have some residents here as well.
Right, right. So we're going to, we're going to continue till August 5. I think if it's okay, Elliot, we're going to put those in writing.
Quite fundamental to the overall project.
Okay, why don't, let's just do that, and then-
How long is that going to-
Depends how long they take to answer, but I-
I mean, I'm sorry, but if it's not going to be completed tonight, why discuss it tonight if we have another applicant to join?
Is it something that you think we could put in, put in writing? Why don't, let's just do this-
Let's start, see where it goes. You can always-
All right, we can do this. And then we'll ask if anything from the public, and then we will continue. Go ahead.
These are questions for the architect? Yes, yes. I believe this is the first time we've seen this worksheet for your lead approach. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Now, at the last meeting, I asked you some questions about the lead, your approach to this project. And I believe you represented in your responses that energy and materials are an integral part of this approach. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. For those who aren't familiar with the program, this lead program, I believe, the one you're under here, has a potential for 100 credits or 101, something like that?
It's 100, and then there are extras, but yes, that's a fair assessment.
Okay. And under this particular lead category, there are 38 credits potentially for energy optimization and other energy-related aspects. Is that correct?
I will, I will stipulate that I believe you, you have the document ahead of you.
Okay. And in this worksheet you've given us, of the 38 potential credits, it's almost 40% of the 100, right? 38 is almost 40% of 100. You've indicated that one credit in your approach is for energy optimization. That's what it says here. That the vast majority of the credits you're getting, and there's nothing wrong with this because the program allows you to do it this way. But the way I read this, something like 90% of the credits you're going for have to do with the design process, the site selection, which was a given by the town, the existing infrastructure, which was a given by the town, the density, which you're arguing on one half, on one hand, you want to make smaller parking spaces in order to accommodate the building, but you're using that density to get credits. And again, there's nothing wrong with it. I just want the board to understand that you're planning to prefabricate certain things, which is going to give you four credits. So that your approach to how you're going to build the building, and the site selection, and the design process, and the existing infrastructure are accounting for something like 90% of the credits. And of all the credits you could get, 10% are coming from your selection of materials and energy optimization. Is that a correct reading of the document you've given us?
Yes, we tend to believe that the best, the best lead design, the best sustainable design is like a pyramid, where the site selection, and that there are a lot of easy things to do by being in a community like yours that is transit accessible, that where there's lots of connectivity to libraries and restaurants and other uses like that. That's part of lead. And that's an important part of lead. And that's why you're seeing what you're seeing in that document. As you go up to the top of the pyramid, the credits get more expensive, harder to achieve, and they're more in terms of gadgetry and other kinds of items that may not be, in our estimation, befitting. We're not looking for some, you know, bright silver gem of, you know, with Willy Bird's on this building. This is a building that is meant to quietly contribute and connect the more residential portions of the community, as I've spoken to earlier in my testimony, to the, to the commercial aspects of the town. And in doing our analysis of lead, we felt that this was the best way to achieve a lead silver project. We're going to try to strive for gold, but we're stipulating for a lead silver project.
Okay, so I believe I'm not the only one who thinks that, you know, that energy is a pretty important part of lead, but that notwithstanding your comments at the last meeting, in fact, energy use is a real low priority in terms of your sustainable approach to this project. That's what this says to me. I just want the board to be aware of that.
We're designing the project to be solar-ready. It's just that the tax credits and the other incentives that have been there in the past are not currently available. But we will be providing an area on the garage where, you know, when those incentives come back in the state of New Jersey, we're ready for them, and we can install them into the project. But currently, we will, that is not part of the project at the moment.
But when you say solar-ready, you mean the roof is strong enough to support solar panels?
Now, the roof is strong enough to support solar panels, that the electrical infrastructure is there to receive them, so you don't have to add a lot of stuff to make it-
When you say it's ready, is it going to have inverters already in place? Or is it simply going to have a section of an electrical panel where you can plug in the solar?
Where there's a section of the electrical panel where you can plug in and connect it easily without a lot of retrofit to the project.
So, what, why don't, I think, thank you, that's great. Maybe you could, for next meeting, in absentia, you could elaborate your approach to the energy credit contribution.
We'd be happy to do that.
That'd be great. Okay.
Mr. Chair, can we start again at 7:00? The next meeting, just as soon?
Sure. We'll discuss that in a minute. Okay, I think that's a good suggestion.
I just make one last request. If there's going to be any additional information that we get in at least two days in advance of the meeting, not the day of the meeting or the night before the meeting?
Well, it's also unusual, we've only had, you know, we don't have a month in between our meetings, we only have a few weeks. So everybody- our meetings, we only have a few weeks, so everybody's, I agree with you, but everybody's trying their best. At this point, before we should have, I tried to before we dismissed the planner, I didn't know whether any questions we had from the public for this planner. Who's the planner? Given, we can also bring him back, so that's possibly, why don't we do that?
Do I have to do one now or should I wait?
Well, I should probably wait. Let's do that. We'll bring the planner back. Thank you for coming back. So, okay.
Can we also ask, in the same way, if there are other questions or issues?
Yes.
That it would, if they could be passed to your secretary so that we can be prepared to respond?
Yes, you've done a fantastic job in being responsive, and we'll do, we'll make sure that we're as thorough as possible in giving you any other questions we have, so that next August 5th, that should be...
You get as many answers as we possibly can get to you efficiently.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can they provide a comprehensive list of all the variances now, since we have a new list and it's...
I think if you did, if you actually...
All of them.
This is a fantastic worksheet, but I would make it a little more concise.
All of them.
Why don't you give us a concise, this is background, perfect, and then you make it concise, and then we can, it'll help us in the resolution as well, once we get to it.
Mr. Carey?
We're Carey, next. Thank you all for coming, we really appreciate it, you did a great job.
7:00.
7:00. Is that good, the board? Can we do it? Can we push, do it, 7:00, August 5th?
I'm not noticing it yet.
7:00.
Okay. Seton Hall, we will need, it's 5 of 9, we need at least 10 minutes. You guys have to set up, and we have to clear our decks. So we'll be back here, let's say at 10 after 9, we'll start.
All right. Jerry?
No.
Okay, good evening, we're back. Now we are going to proceed to case number 226, Seton Hall University, University Center. This is continuation from May 6, 2013. Block 1901, Lot 3, 400 South Orange Avenue. This is a preliminary final site plan application. The applicant seeks to construct a new university center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Kevin Cokely, law firm of McConnell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. It's our pleasure to be here this evening. It's been a few months since we were here on this, if I might just go over how we reached this point. This application was filed last December. It was declared complete in January. We were scheduled for a hearing in February, there were some issues regarding what variances were necessary. Took some time to resolve those issues. We started the hearings in May, May 6. At that hearing, there were three witnesses. There was Mr. Garbini and Mr. Signorello from the university, and Mr. De Jacento, the site engineer. There was testimony regarding the variances and special district... There was testimony regarding the variances in Special District Day. There was quite a bit of testimony regarding the nature of the application. And you asked many questions, and members of the public asked a lot of questions. The application is for a building that's a permitted use. It complies with all of the provisions of the zone, except for two. Those two provisions are: there is a height variance of five feet required, where 75 feet is allowed, 80 feet is called for at one narrow part of the building. And there's an architectural significance. You'll hear from the architect regarding that this evening. The second variance has to do with the distance between buildings. There's a 50-foot requirement in the zone. The existing structure, which is going to be demolished, is 37 feet from Xavier Hall and another Seton Hall building. And the result of the new building, because of architectural issues, will only be 27 feet. So there's a 10-foot exacerbation of that one variance, and then there's a 5-foot height variance with respect to one limited part of the building. I have discussed with Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. School's point about that the master plan that you approved at the Aquinas application did not include the access roadway, service roadway. And I think the agreement is that the way the ordinance applies is that should you approve this application, you would also approve the master plan with the roadway located where this application put it. Tonight, we have several witnesses. Mr. Signarello will testify about a few things related to the project. I anticipate his testimony will be short. Michael Shatkin, the project architect, will testify about a number of issues. Our noise expert will testify, Mr. Joseph Paresco, and Mr. Lothian from Langin, who did traffic counts on South Orange Avenue, will testify. So, and then, and Mr. Garbini is here to answer any questions that you may have, as he did on the prior application. And then finally, Mr. Di Jacento will testify regarding the changes that were made in the service road location, landscaping, and matters of that sort as the university responded to the concerns voiced by members of the public. So I wanted to give you that overview of the witnesses that you hear from. And if you have any questions before I start, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just would maybe warn that, you know, given the lateness of the hour, we're going to do our best to hear everybody and to move forward on it, but that we may have to be prepared again to continue, but we'll do our best.
We're going to do our best to finish. That's all I can tell you to.
Likewise.
With that, I'd like to call Mr. Signarello.
Okay.
I think he was previously sworn. You want to swear again?
Mr. Signarello, were you previously sworn?
Yes, I was.
All right. You're still under oath.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Signarello, you previously testified that you made an assessment of all of the alternatives for the placement of the service road and concluded that its present location is the only viable alternative. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I think you testified that it was your understanding that back in the 1980s, the village had approved the closing of McNulty Gate in connection with the improvement of the Center Street-South Orange intersection.
That's correct.
Right. And after the last meeting, did you ask us to go and Oprah, the records that we could find, that dealt with that matter?
Yes, we did, as well as university files.
All right. And so, did the records that have been found and were presented to the board, did they confirm your prior testimony?
Yes, they do.
All right. Could you just explain to the board why that's so?
What was discovered in the record search was that in 1984, by the South Orange Planning Board, there was resolution passed to officially close the McNulty Gate and open the Farinella Gate at Center Street.
All right. And is it your understanding that the village's position through Mr. Renda is that there should not be more access points to Seton Hall than the Farinella Gate?
Yes, that was confirmed by Mr. Renda.
And that's a signal-controlled intersection?
Yes, it is.
All right. Now, did you, subsequent to the last hearing, did you make, have occasion to visit the fire chief and the police chief?
Yes, we did. We've had conversations with both Chief Marky from the fire department and Chief Shalell from the police department.
All right. And did you ask their opinion about whether the service road was located in a good location?
Yes, we did.
All right. And did they write a letter about that to the planning board?
Yes, there's communication to the board, signed by both Chief Shalell and Marky in support of the placement of the service road and the associated lighting.
All right. And did they, did they describe why they thought the road was in a good position?
Well, the road was in a good position because it allows emergency access to the rear of buildings that they currently do not access, as well as will provide emergency access to the new university center.
All right. I don't know whether the board has received a letter from the respective chiefs.
I have to talk to the microphone.
Excuse me?
Just be sure you're talking to the microphone, please.
Okay. But we do have a, did receive a copy, and I'd like to have that marked as A8, subject to your receipt of it in official correspondence. Yep. And if I might, after marking it, pass it up to the board so that the board could read it? Is that okay? Now, there's also been some questions raised about how this service road will be used and what the delivery time period is. Are you aware of those questions?
Yes, I am.
All right. Could you explain to the board what the delivery schedule would be?
Typically, the delivery schedule would be from 7:00 a.m. in the morning to probably noon time each day. There would be various deliveries, as well as trash pickup, things of those natures. But typically, we try to schedule our deliveries, as you see in most stores and office complexes. Trash usually comes in the morning, as well as food deliveries.
All right. And you direct your vendors to make delivery during that period?
Yes, we would direct our vendors to do that.
All right. I have no further questions of Mr. Signarello.
Okay. Board, do you have any questions, Mr. Witness?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, is the position of the road, this service drive, being driven at all by the location, locations of the temporary buildings and/or the clearances required between the temporary buildings and the permanent buildings?
No, it's not.
Okay. Secondly, have you calculated the approximate footprint of all this pavement that's being provided to create this road and the turnaround?
I don't have that number available to me right now, but it's something we could provide to the board.
Do you have even an order of magnitude of how many square feet we're talking about?
Possibly the civil engineer who's here tonight may have that calculation.
Yep.
Could we ask, since we're talking about this, could you ask that person to?
Yeah, while he's waiting, he can, he'll do some calculations.
Okay, great.
And he'll come up and testify about it.
And also, what is being done to mitigate the stormwater issues that are associated with all this?
Again, our civil engineer will be able to.
Very good. I'll hold off to it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, is there a question for it?
You said deliveries on, from trucks from most, every day. Do you mean Monday to Friday, Monday to Saturday, or are you saying all seven days a week?
Typically, it's Monday to Friday. That's not to preclude a delivery on a Saturday, or a trash pickup on a Saturday.
And the deliveries are coming from all the vendors for the building?
All the vendors for the building, primarily for food service operation.
Okay.
What are your hours of delivery? Is it all day long, or is there a peak hour for delivery?
Well, the peak hours for deliveries would be 7:00 a.m. to noon time.
I'm sorry.
That's a, wait till they pass. The peak hours for delivery are typically 7:00 a.m. to noon hour.
The deliveries that will be coming onto campus, is this more or less what's already taking place coming to campus?
No, it would be no change from what currently arrives on campus today.
All right, good. Any questions for this witness from the public? Questions? You can come up. What you do is you come up, you'll state your name and address, and then you can ask a question. And what I should say is that when we deal in this process, these are questions, these aren't opinions right now, so, just for clarification.
My name is Arthur Nesbit, 16 South Center, South Orange. Just a quick question, because I actually work at a facility that has a 90,000-square-foot warehouse, so I'm familiar with schedules. I'm the safety compliance manager.
Come closer to the microphone.
I happen to be their safety and compliance managers for an oil facility. And we have a 90,000-square-foot warehouse, so I know about loading docks and bays and trucks. And to say, to outline that a schedule will be met by trucking outfits regardless of what you do is incorrect. They, you may give them a schedule, they could be two, three, four hours outside of that schedule. Now, you've indicated that they would come on Saturdays, Monday through Friday, and you also indicated that the, their numbers of trucks in and out would not increase. My question is, presently, they go through the university to get to their destination, correct?
Correct.
And now, you're routing them behind the facility, which is kind of in front of the facility, based on this new design of the student center. So it would be behind what is the student center, right? To get them out of the view of the students. But they would be in the view of the public on that main road?
Well, they would be in view of students also that are still on campus.
If they're in the back?
Well.
What is, what would be the back, right?
Well, it's the front of the university.
Okay. So, but it would be back of that building?
It would be back, it would be the rear of some buildings, yes.
And you also indicated that the reason why the access road needs to be there is because you want to improve or allow emergency vehicles, if necessary, to get to the back of the building, correct?
That was one reason that was taken into consideration.
Like I said, we have a 90,000-square-foot warehouse, so it's really big. And access, fire department access, they can access that building from three areas. They do not need to access the rear. Why? Because we are actually a storage facility, a terminal. And so, I would just like to.
I think he's going to ask a question, right?
Right. So the question is, do they really need to have that access, or is that just additional access, but it's not a need to have access, correct?
Well, I think you were starting to say where your terminal has access from three sides.
Three sides. They need to access.
If you looked at our buildings today, they don't have access from three sides. Some of those buildings only have access from one side, and this would provide access from a second location on the campus.
But presently, that access is still, the fire department and police department believe it's adequate, correct? Or they wouldn't have a C of O to operate the building, right? So they believe it's adequate.
It was, it was built in accordance with the requirements of the village.
So it's adequate for what you have?
It was built in accordance with the requirements of the village.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. My name is Janet F. Rosenthal. I'm a resident on Warren Court, and I have two questions. Do you have a site plan that we can look at while I'm doing this? Do you have a site plan that we can look at while I ask my first question?
I believe so, yes.
Take the microphone with you if you have a question.
This drawing we're looking at was already called into testimony as A3.
Okay.
Where's South Orange Avenue on it?
South Orange Avenue is right here.
So this is where the access road is coming through?
That's correct.
What is the distance between the road here and the sidewalk? How much green space footage? Where, at its narrowest point, this section here, how close is this road to the sidewalk? How much planting area will there actually be? And I would note for the board that last time they were here, they distributed a site plan to the public that stated a dimension on it that was not accurate. It was very misleading.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we have submitted a revised plan of this access roadway.
Is that what we're looking at there?
No, this was the, I believe is the original. This is the A3 that was previously introduced. I think that the question would be better held for the site engineer who will testify.
Could you wait, will you wait on that? We'll address it to the site engineer.
Perhaps my second question as well, then. Because my second question is, which direction does this road slope? When we get a torrential rain, is the water going to hit that road and run down Warren Court? Or is it going to hit the road and run into Seton Hall?
Well, the site engineer answered the drainage. Thank you. Any other questions for this witness?
John Gay, 10 Elm Court. You mentioned that there are going to be trucks that are going to be accessing this proposed new roadway?
That's correct.
And how many of those per day are going to be tractor-trailers, do you estimate?
We have some data that we can produce in further testimony, in terms of the number of trucks on that roadway.
And what other, besides the tractor-trailers, what else is going to be traveling that road?
Besides tractor-trailers, there would be some other utility vehicles and box trucks.
And what would be the size, if you can get an idea what the size of these vehicles are?
I mean, everything ranges from a cart, a Cushman cart that we use on campus, to a box truck, a typical box truck, you know, small, just slightly larger than a van.
And as far as, right now, you've said that the road is going to be used for service vehicles only, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
But it could be used for other things as well, once it's built, is that correct?
Of course, it could.
So it could be buses for Seton Hall. So the hours that you're prescribing now could obviously change once it's built.
We don't anticipate any buses on that road going to the university center.
Is there any way that we can assure that that's not going to happen in the future, other than relying on your word today? Which, not that I'm not doubting it today, but things change. And, you know, what's proposed now, you know, once the road's built, it's a two-lane road. And I think we're talking about a very different thing. If we're going to have a couple of trucks here versus, for example, the Seton Hall shuttles staying there, parking there, driving there, perhaps buses from other events, driving there, staying there, and, you know, being right across the street from this, that could be a problem for me.
I think we can clarify in the resolution on this project in terms of how that road will be used.
The other question I have is, you mentioned that you had considered other proposals for, besides this service road, is that correct? And I apologize, if I could walk over to the site plan here. Did you consider anything that would use the existing roadway and perhaps have the turnaround somewhere back in this area to access the loading dock here?
Yes, I had previously testified that that was one of the considerations.
Okay. And what was the reason that was rejected?
Well, this is... The problem becomes the same problem that we have today in terms of, this is a high pedestrian area between the parking lot and the campus buildings. If a vehicle were to come in the current driveway and stop here and try to back down this area, it's a significant area, a distance for which a truck would have to back into, again, mixing pedestrians and truck traffic or any kind of vehicle traffic. again, mixing pedestrians and truck traffic or any kind of vehicle traffic. And that's one of the things we were trying to prevent, was a crossing between pedestrians and vehicles.
Okay. What about something that accessed the loading dock through this area here?
Through this area, again, you're going through a major pedestrian artery in the middle of campus, and if you've been in this area, there's a significant grade differential between the current parking lot and roadway to where the university center sits today.
And what about if the building were shifted in location down a little bit? Parking turnaround here therefore wouldn't really be interfering with the, with the parking lot.
I think shifting the building any closer to South Orange Avenue, what we tried to do is maintain the exact setback that the current building has, and moving the building closer to South Orange Avenue would start to eliminate any lawn area that we have as a buffer between South Orange Avenue and the building, even as it currently sits, but it...
I mean, you're eliminating a significant amount of lawn area from the front here with this, with this access road, right?
We are eliminating some lawn area here, but this galleon lawn area is, is a significant place of gathering. It's very level, and it's attractive as you come up South Orange Avenue.
Okay, but I guess I won't comment on how attractive this turnaround is going to be now.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chris Johnson from Warren Court.
We make sure you put that up.
Chris Johnson from Warren Court. Did you go into any, I know in the last meeting...
Turn to the mic.
In the last meeting, they talked about sound?
Mm-hmm.
And how the sound deflects off of the, the current dorm and buildings, concrete buildings that they have, parallel to South Orange Avenue, that go into, you know, the traffic. We hear the traffic already in our blocks. The additional trucks, which now would be, am I correct, 100% of the trucks, delivery or a substantial amount of the trucks that are coming into Seton Hall University will now go along that South, South Orange Avenue entry. Is that correct?
There is, will be a number of trucks.
So whatever, so what we're saying is, it's not the new, it's going to be all of the traffic that came from all of the entries will now go in that way.
All the, all the trucks that currently come onto campus through that direction, a portion of them will go to the service road.
Will go to the service road. So now, I know this was asked the last time, did you go into analogy of how much sound will be deflecting on to the, the people, the residents in that South Orange Avenue, or...
I think any testimony regarding sound, we did do a sound study, and we have our expert here tonight to discuss the sound study.
Wait on that question, I think, for a different witness.
And will the, will the, will the sound, we cannot stop the sound from South Orange Avenue, will the sound, is there adequate landscape buffering the roadway at Seton Hall inside campus and, you know, the street? Is there adequate landscape, hardscape materials or something that will help deflect that?
I, I think you'll see here tonight, we did submit the landscaping plans to the board, and I think you'll hear in testimony tonight how we've addressed those landscape concerns.
So yes, so stay tuned, we have a different witness who will address that.
Okay. Is there a possibility that we could see a scale drawing? Because we have not, I mean, the residents have not seen the new, I think there's supposed to be elevation done, right?
What he's saying is there's going to be a presentation dealing, addressing the sound, so when that presentation comes up, you'll see the information that they have for you.
But just in general?
Is there one? Yes, there is.
Because we haven't seen it. I mean, I, you know, I, and we haven't seen the last time that we had saw something that wasn't to scale. So we're just trying to figure out how much, you know, is going to be there for, you know, for us to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's available.
Yes, please.
I have some reading to answer.
No.
Just one more question. How many loading bays do you actually have?
Excuse me, I couldn't...
How many loading bays do you actually have?
I believe there was, is two loading bays for trucks, and then there's a loading bays for dumpsters.
Okay. So how many loading bays?
I believe altogether there was four.
So you can be, you can load two trucks or unload two trucks at the same time simultaneously?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and you do know trucks are, as we talked about, about 54 feet, be lower than that, it's about 48 feet. But, you know, you should know that, because it makes a big difference in how much they can back up and what the truck can carry. Key point though, you stated earlier that the reason why you couldn't do the turnabout there was because they had to back up, trucks had to back up. What's the exact distance they have to back up presently to get into the loading docks?
Currently?
Yeah.
Currently, currently what happens on campus...
You can just tell me the distance.
Go and answer your question.
The distance.
I don't have the exact distances for you, but I can show you the circulation that trucks use today.
Well, you will, we'll look at that, but then I'd like you to provide the information for...
Pardon?
We'll, we'll want you to provide that exact information one time, yeah?
Currently trucks come in through the maintenance Farinale Gate at South, at Center Street. They follow the, the current Seton Drive down to the corner, what we call Madison Avenue. It's the corner where the library is and the pool area. The smaller trucks can pass right up Madison and stop at the top of the hill where the university center is today. Some back down into the loading area, some unload right at the top. Some larger trucks have to actually do a turn here and back up this distance up Madison Avenue to the university center.
The reason I'm asking the distance is because you, you, you're using the analogy that...
Just need the mic out.
Somehow means something. If a truck is backing up 50 feet, truck is 50 feet, so it's not really doing anything. If you're telling me he's backing up 200 feet, I can understand, because I, we have trucks every day. I see it every day. So tell me he's backing up 50 feet, tell me he's backing up 100 feet, you've got to tell me something so I know, like I said, my job is a safety and compliance manager, so I'm very aware of what is safe for a truck to do and what is unsafe. So you're talking about pedestrians, depends on distance, depends on what kind of...
The microphone.
What kind of controls you can put in, engineering controls. That's the first thing you should be looking at, is engineering controls to make your backing up distance safer for those pedestrians, if you care about pedestrians.
Thank you.
Question over.
Yeah, I want to know, is there any engineering controls in his present backing up scenario?
We have other witnesses, I think, that'll be more effective to...
I'm just trying to...
So hold on to that question when the right guy comes up.
Mr. Signorel, with respect to fire chief and police chief, they send you, we support this, this application and the location and configuration of the proposed roadway because it will greatly improve emergency access for the university center and many other buildings on campus.
That's what they've stated.
Did they verbally say that to you as well?
That's what they've signed in their letter, yes.
All right. And did they say the proposed roadway will also improve existing truck access to the university and make it much safer for students, faculty, staff, and the public, because trucks will no longer have to travel through the university by intersecting, intersecting very busy pedestrian paths?
That's what they have stated, yes.
All right, is that your position as well?
That's correct.
All right, no further questions.
Thank you. Okay, so this, we have more questions from the public? Come up.
John Teeford, 104 South Kingman Road, South Orange, New Jersey.
Okay.
As someone who's also received a letter of commendation from Chief Chella, I understand certainly how this road improves safety. I just wonder if it would be necessary at all if there weren't an eight-foot-tall iron and brick fence between South Orange and Seton Hall along South Orange Avenue.
I don't, there's, there's no question here.
What did, what did you...
Have you considered moving the fence to improve access to the back of those buildings?
It is not something we looked at as part of this application.
Okay.
Gina Nesbit, 16 South Center Street. You mentioned that you were changing the access road for safety reasons, and I'm curious to know, has a student ever gotten hit by a car or one of your trucks before?
One of the reasons was safety. I'm not aware of anybody getting hit, but I've only been with the university for five years. Dennis Carbone is, is nodding to me that there have been incidents where people have been hit.
Yes. Students have been hit.
They've been hit by trucks, loading and unloading in that current space.
And vehicles as well.
No, I'm, I'm talking specifically about the loading of the trucks, because that's what they're intending to do.
Yes.
Good evening, William Cramer from 5 Elm Court. Can you tell me again how many trucks there actually are in terms of numbers? So there are box trucks, there are heavy trucks, what are the numbers?
I, I think I previously said I don't have those numbers with me right now, but we can have them before the end of the hearing tonight.
Okay. Do I understand it correctly still, that you're still proposing a two-way road?
That's correct.
And what's the motivation for that?
Two-way traffic, we want two-way traffic on the roadway. We've, I think you're going to hear in tonight's testimony how we've modified the roadway to decrease the width of the roadway, but we're still looking to maintain two ways, otherwise you would have trucks trying to pass each other on that roadway, and then it would create more backup possibly than is anticipated.
Okay, so that to some extent indicates that you anticipate rather heavy traffic, that you need several trucks being active at the same time on the roadway.
I didn't say heavy traffic, but there, there will come a time when two vehicles want to pass on the roadway.
And the final question. There seem to be concern that moving a building up by, whatever, just a number, 20 feet and taking away lawn is, is a much stronger aesthetic consideration than putting a two-way service road and a 100-feet turning circle plus loading dock towards South Orange Avenue. Is that correct? That aesthetically, that seems to be the kind of less impact option than moving a building up 20 feet and losing lawn space?
I, I don't think it was ever stated that moving the building would change how the building is accessed. I think I had stated previously on somebody else's question, they, their suggestion about where the loading dock should go, and I think I answered that it was not feasible to put the loading dock in that location.
So you did not consider any redesigning of the building or relocation of the building in order to accommodate a loading dock that does not face South Orange Avenue?
I think I previously had testified how we evaluated where the loading dock should go on the building for a number of reasons.
So what's the answer to the question?
I think that is the answer to the question.
So you see you have looked at other options?
We have looked, we have looked at other options as to where the service road should go and how the building should be accessed.
Go next to the microphone if you, well, unfortunately, yes.
Even if you have the location of the building at a different part of campus. So that was the only location on campus that you could come up with for that particular building?
I think it's fair to say that's the location they chose.
Okay. Fine, thanks.
Thank you.
Have you considered putting the road and the loading dock below grade?
I, I think you'll hear further testimony regarding the changes that have been made to the, the loading dock as well, as well as some visuals, so you can get a better opportunity to see the changes made and the improvements made.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's all from the public. Thank you for your questions. Thank you.
Just one more, just one more question.
Okay.
Did the chief suggest that issue as well?
Yes.
All right, what, what'd they say?
In terms of the...
The submerged roadway?
In terms of the submerged roadway, they actually did not want it to be burned, and I think you'll see in the drawings tonight the reasoning for not submerging the road any further.
Did they address that issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, no further questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Michael Shatkin.
Thank you.
Mr. Shatkin, what is your profession, you, you have not been sworn here, have you?
Not, not... No, I have not.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give here this evening is the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Shatkin. My office is located at 337 Witherspoon Street, Princeton, New Jersey.
All right, and Mr. Shatkin, what is your profession?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
All right, and has your firm been involved in preparation of the architectural plans for this building?
Yes, we have.
And have you testified as an architect before boards or courts of the state of New Jersey previously?
I have, and I have recently testified before this board as well.
All right, and were you qualified as a witness before this board?
I was qualified as a witness before this board.
And other boards?
And other boards as well.
All right, do you want to hear more, more of his testimony?
No, accept it.
Okay, all right. Mr. Shatkin, I guess that maybe in a big macro kind of way, can you tell the board what the overall architectural intent of this project is?
Okay. Just in a general way, what I, I wanted to do was first sort of note the importance of a university center to the success of the university. By definition, a university center is the hub of university life, is the heart and soul of the university. It serves to enhance student life and support recruitment and retention of students. And essentially, that's the purpose that Seton Hall is constructing in this, this building. And the existing facility, which I will walk through, does, does not meet the requirements of a contemporary student center and does not meet the standards of peer and, Seton Hall or as well as its peer institutions.
All right, and have you had any experience with similar types of buildings and what they might have contributed to a campus?
I'll, I'll just reference four recent university center projects that we've recently completed or that are underway. One at Drew University recently completed the student center there. We recently completed the new student center at Richard Stockton College. And we have completed the university center at Lawrence University in Appleton, Wisconsin. And just to name one more, we have completed the student center renovations at Hopearth William Smith College.
All right. All right, so in comparison to those structures, how would you look at the existing Seton Hall center?
Well, I'm just going to just put some images up and also describe, the existing university center was constructed in 1960. It was designed in the style of a commercial office building. It is significantly undersized in regard to square feet and the amenities that one would expect in a, in a student center. The, it is common for the university center in a, in a university to represent the architecture of the institution and the history of the institution. There are three iconic buildings on Seton Hall's campus. I think that everyone in South Orange is probably familiar with and enjoys. That includes Marshall Hall, President's Hall, and the chapel of the Immaculate Conception. Those are images that Seton Hall aspires to recreate and aspires to provide within the architecture of its, of its new student center. The existing building is aged, hard to maintain in heat, and there are a number of programmatic spaces that it does not contain. It does not really contain a, you know, a central lobby, student lounges, or informal gathering spaces, meeting rooms, adequate areas for student government, and clubs. And the dining services do not support the variety of dietary requirements and taste that currently exist. At the time the building was constructed, it was more of a situation of cafeteria-type, type dining, and while they have accommodated... And, um, while they have accommodated, uh, in the best way they can, um, the kitchen areas and dining areas are significantly undersized. There is, um, no, um, large auditorium space, uh, and, and, uh, central theater space within, within the campus. And that's one of the other components that they're seeking.
All right, could you, using a board, could you, uh, explain to the planning board how you attempted to meet the needs of Seton Hall with, with this design?
Okay.
Want to take the microphone with you?
Well, I'll, I'll do it right from here. The first image that I have up, and I believe that was, it's not been entered, and it's an image of the existing campus. And, um, the, the one thing, should we give it an exhibit number?
That would be A-9.
The one other aspect of, uh, I'll say that before I go to the aspects of the new design, the one other aspect of the existing student center is that as the campus is organized, there are, um, essentially two recognizable precincts to the campus. One, one is the buildings to the east, um, which represents, um, essentially that, the mall, the mall area which is bound by, uh, the, um, arts and sciences, nursing, Fahey, Caprini, Xavier, and, um, the other residential building, um, in the, in the south, in the southeast. That presents a, a pavilion arrangement. Sitting right between that and, and the lawn area of the university is, um, the camp, is the current student, student center that doesn't afford any, any really access or link between, between the pedestrian ways on, on the university. So it really, just by its circulation pattern, doesn't, also does, does not support the idea of a student center as a central place that people can pass through and, and encounter other, other students. And I'll, now show you the new design and the new site plan and how that, how that works out. We have one new exhibit here, which is the image to the, to the left, which is the perspective. And the other image I'm going to refer to is, is exhibit A3.
So exhibit A10 would be the, the perspective, A3 already marked.
Okay. So just to give you a, a general understanding of how the new university center relates, relates to the campus and how it's positioned. It is essentially positioned in the, in the center of the campus, in the same position as the existing building. It sits on the existing, on the existing site. And it basically connects, um, the two precincts that I decided, that I described earlier in my, in my testimony. The materials of, of the building are based upon, uh, President's Hall and Marshall Hall. The building, um, is arranged or is a, a composition of a, of a series of program elements that is by design to, to reduce the scale and to, uh, be expressive of what's going on inside the building and relate the building, um, to the existing architecture and to be of a human scale. The, the building is, uh, is one of pitched roofs, um, and it had probably the most significant element of, of the building in terms of its architecture and place is the, is the central gable area, which I'll point to. That, that space is located, uh, almost precisely where the location of the existing entry provides a welcoming entrance. Um, it is proportioned, um, to provide a, a two-story entry, both, and round window as well as the glass brings daylight into the building. The atrium is the central space, the living room of the university building. And many of the program elements within the, within the university that I described earlier, um, open off and, and are apparent to people when they walk in the building. They get a sense of what the building is all about and the activities and a sense of what the university is, is all about. It also provides a cross-axis of circulation from the, from, from east to west, um, within, within the university, uh, center. It is a symbolic, um, element adjacent to it, which is the, the chapel, um, which has a, a steeple element on it. The chapel is a two-story element. Um, and essentially, the image that you're seeing is the image of the university's green and you're looking, um, toward, toward the east at the main, the main facade of the, of the building.
Now, it, this is the area where there's the five-foot height variance, is that correct?
Right. So, um, with regard to the height variance, um, there is an 80-foot, um, stone parapet wall. When I say a stone parapet wall, I, I think the image shows that, um, it's literally the wall that is at the very, at the very end of the gable. Um, that wall is about one foot four and it's 80 feet high, one foot four in depth. And it's a triangular section of wall that is, uh, five feet higher than what is, what is permitted. Um, the other aspect of the variance is that the very top of that, um, slate gable roof is seven, 76 feet, four inches, uh, rather than the 75 feet. So that's another triangular, uh, sliver that just touches the, the ordinance restriction in that one place. The, the importance of, of, of why we're seeking the variance there is the proportions of the building, um, and, um, the architecture of the building. We're trying to be, be in scale with, um, that as a central space on a large college green. And, uh, the width in the program and the heights and slopes of the, of the roof, um, are, um, architecturally in proportion. So that's the small variance that we're seeking with regard to that element.
All right, now, um, what about visibility to South Orange Avenue and that?
This, this, this too is a new exhibit.
Okay. So A11 is a perspective from South Orange Avenue?
So A11 is a perspective, uh, from the boundary line or the, of the edge of the campus, uh, with South Orange Avenue toward, toward your back. And it's looking over the Galley-on-Lawn. And you're looking at, uh, the first element that you see is a, a two-story portion of the, of the dining area. Um, that's the, that's approximately 21 feet. And the elements that you're seeing on this side, the elements that face South Orange Avenue, they're all reduced in scale. Um, the other element, which is a portion of, of dining on the lower level and student government and student, uh, activities and clubs on the upper area is this, is this gable and configuration. And that is, the condition there is in, is in the 20 feet. So at this end of, of the, of the campus center building, campus university center building, when you're, um, near South Orange Avenue, you're experiencing buildings that are two stories high rather than the taller, uh, building that I described, um, which is the center building into the campus and on the, and on the, uh, university green. And this is a view, again, of dining. And the taller element behind is the, is the event room.
All right, now, um, there's been some discussion of the loading dock. Could you, uh, tell the board what, how that has been designed?
Uh, sure, I'm going to bring up one more perspective image and then I'm going to walk people through the sections and give an indication of the, because I think that with, there may be some misunderstanding of the loading, of the loading dock and I'm going to try and address to what degree it is, uh, I'll say nestled between, um, the arts and science building and this new building and to what degree the, the contours are, are helping us.
Before, before you do that for the board, will you, um, point out in the initial perspective from the green, the second perspective where that's taken from or how they relate?
Sure. What you're looking at is this corner gable right here. Essentially, it relates to that, to that end. So you're looking, you were in, in that direction.
Yeah, we get to the microphone. Okay.
So these, these, these two are, uh, if you could join, join this board with that board, you will be, you're essentially walking around, around, around the building. And I'll show you that in plan as well because I think that may help, help people a little bit more than that description. So going back to the, to the plan of the building, to the site plan.
A3.
Right, to A3, what you're looking at in the perspective on the left is that you're looking in this direction, you're looking
Just pick up the mic.
You're looking across the campus, uh, green. And in the perspective that is, that I described as being on Galley-on-Lawn, you are looking from, um, essentially near McNulty Gate, uh, back toward, toward the building, toward the Galley-on-Lawn. So those two cor, those two perspectives join in the corner.
All right, so yeah, I think you were going to go on to the, uh, loading dock and how that works.
This is another new exhibit.
What, what, do you want to call this one?
This, this is looking toward, toward the east. I'm sorry, it's looking from the east, um, toward the central gable that I described. It's also, is beginning to show a, a small view of, of the loading dock. And what I, what I'd like to indicate here is, first of all, that the, that the loading dock is an interior feature of the building. There's a 45 feet, uh, 45-foot-long load, loading area and the dock is an internal dock to the building. The loading dock is, um, essentially in this position, below grade. And, um, there are service doors on the outside that would, would close off the loading dock when it's not in, in use. Um, we, we've heard, um,
Can you point to the
The length of the truck is being 53, 50
Can you show us the loading dock?
I will certainly point out on this image and I appreciate that it's hard to see, but the loading dock is
Right.
Right there, you're seeing just, just the glimpse of the loading dock, the loading dock outer doors to the loading, to the loading space. And if you were standing where this image is taken and what, you're standing really with your back to the arts and science building. So if you can imagine a tight, a tight court or a recess between two buildings, the, the loading dock is, is, is within that, within that recess area.
Could you just point out where the arts and science building is and what direction we're looking at on that map?
Uh, certainly. Um, the plaza that I described is, is right here. That face of the loading area is right here. The loading configuration is within the building. This is the arts and science building and this is the, the turnaround that was described before. And this is, um, going down grade into the lower, lower level of the building. And I have a section which I'll show you how that, how that looks and how that operates in relationship to the landscape as well as the contours. We, we had planned to bring a, a larger, um, board to show this, um, image. And I, I apologize for the, for the scale, but I think the packet that the board has, um, includes this, this section. It's called, it was prepared by, by Langen engineers and I'll walk you through it as, as follows. On the far left of the image, what you're looking at is the roadway elevation of South Orange Avenue. Then you're looking at the, the tree line of the shade trees and a series of different layering of, of trees. And this section is cut right, um, at the, the loading dock area, the area where we are most dense with regard to our landscape. There are other areas which we'll describe where there's openings in the landscape. But right at this particular point, what we're, what we're doing, and we've drawn a few sightlines that show the, the viewing angles as being at, all the way up to the, to the plaza level. And what is happening here is that where the service road is, there is a, a rise that is necessary for a whole number of reasons pertaining to underground utilities and stormwater management within that area and the overall contours of the road. And then you're sloping downhill, first thing you encounter is the closure to the loading area. And then 45 feet beyond that, you will, you're encountering the surface of the loading dock. For the, a, a, a large number of the trucks, they will be, um, within that area. The tractor trailers, I think we will acknowledge that about a, a little less than a car length, uh, the tractor portion of it will, will stick out when a tractor trailer is in that, is in that location. But in this location, while it will stick out of the closure doors, you're behind the landscape area and you are, um, it's, it's concealed. And we'll show you another image, um, about what that looks like from South Orange Avenue, um, where we have overlaid the landscape on top of existing photographs.
That, what was just placed on the board has already been delivered as part of the application.
What I'm, what I'm going to do is I'm going to put up four, four images. Um, the image on, that's closest to me begins at the Galley-on-Lawn, shows the view of the Galley-on-Lawn, shows the view of the new university center, um, to what degree it will be visible. And it also shows a continuation, uh, with the image that's on the left, um, as you're looking, um, down, down South Orange Avenue to the east. And as intended to, to give people an understanding of what the landscape area is intended to look like, we will, uh, continue to work on that with the board's professionals to make certain that we achieve that, the results that we're indicating. Um, the other images that I thought would, that would be useful to provide are the images that are lower down. These are the images of the existing conditions. And, uh, the university is taking the opportunity, um, or is, um, I'll say taking the opportunity to do two things with the landscape. The first thing is obviously to mitigate the, the service drive. The second thing it is intending to do is to improve this, this edge condition and, and recognize that it's an important edge condition for the university and how it presents itself to South Orange and the community at large prospective students. We also acknowledge that it's an important entranceway to South Orange Village. So these have to be, these have to be labeled, but I, I think I'll, I described them. I think what I'd like to do is just sort of walk people through it because what they capture is this, um, I think desire on the part of the university and desire on the part of the community to have, um, a view of the new university center and continue having views into the campus. But what it also captures and, and views of the lawn, but it also captures to what degree that the landscape can be, can be balanced, um, with that, with screening. And it's, and we'll have additional, um, dialogue. And we'll have additional dialogue with regard to exactly how that takes place. But there's a variety of shrubs. We're trying to create, I'll say, define the edge condition to create an alley of trees. I mean, right now, along the South Orange Avenue, there's sort of a very nice tree structure that is at the central street entrance to the university. It's an alley of trees. It's very strong. It's near the gate. And then it begins to be less strong and less formal as it moves down. And those are the lower images.
All right. So I'm going to mark as A13, an existing condition, and what is that perspective?
That is, starting at the western edge of the Galley-on-Lawn, captures the existing university center. And we're looking toward the south. We're on the opposite side.
So the board can see it?
So this is the present condition as it existed when we captured the photograph about a month ago.
All right. Now, the next one is going to be A14. Is that same perspective proposed?
The next one is the proposed perspective with the new building and with the proposed landscape. And what you're looking at also, right, more or less at this location, is you're actually seeing, you're looking toward the loading dock area. And you're looking at the view that you would get from South Orange Avenue of the truck turnaround.
All right. And now, I'm going to mark A15. It's an existing condition from where?
It's an existing condition that just is almost joined, a continuum of this presentation, moving from the west toward the east. It captures just beyond Galley-on-Lawn, the university's Arts and Science Building nursing.
All right. So that's 15 is the existing condition?
Right.
And 16, can you describe that?
And what you're looking at at 16 is you're looking, I guess we're overlapping a bit. You're continuing to look at the turnaround. You're looking at the landscaping around the turnaround. You're also looking at, you know, down at the landscape in terms of lawn area that has been carved into this composition as the edge condition. The road has moved back because the road when it was previously presented was presented as a 24-foot wide cartway. The road has been reduced to an 18-foot wide cartway. The 18-foot is a significant dimension because it's the minimum dimension for a fire lane, and we're trying to respect that minimum dimension. There is one section within the roadway that is 24 feet wide, and that permits, and we've already indicated that there's not a lot of traffic here, but it wouldn't be uncommon for a truck to be leaving the dock and another truck to enter the dock. And that widening in the road in one section to 24 feet allows for a passing condition for those two vehicles. The other change which I just want to, in a broad sense, indicate, which is different about the design of the loading dock, is that at the Caprini Hall condition, I'm sorry, is different about the design of the service drive, is that the Caprini Hall condition, we are no longer moving that, we're changing, we're no longer changing the position of the roadway. We're no longer making it any closer than the existing roadway is to the edge of the campus or to the fence. So we've tried to be as responsive as we could to the suggestions that were made by the public as well as the professionals.
All right. Let me ask you a few specific questions. What is the approximate distance from the campus property line to the loading docks?
The approximate distance is 200 feet, not, I'm going to say, to the service doors that close the loading dock, and then to the loading docks themselves, you know, within the building is another 45 feet. So it's approximately 245 feet.
Right. And in your opinion, will the loading docks be well screened from views from South Orange Avenue?
In my opinion, the loading docks will be well screened.
And now, this building does not have Green's LEED certification, does it?
The building is not seeking LEED certification, but there are a number of sustainable features to the building. And I would like to indicate those to... The university has done energy modeling of the building, and we actually have gone through a preliminary assessment, and our designs have been based upon the LEED standards, the U.S. Green Building Council standards, particularly with regard to energy efficiency. So we're using highly efficient mechanical systems. The building has chillers and, as well as DX units that are scoring high on the energy scale. The building will have a very efficient building skin. We are, in terms of one of the big site issues, we are building on a prior developed site, and we're sort of nestling the building into the existing conditions of the university, not disrupting the natural environment. We're maintaining open space, the campus green as well as Galley-on-Lawn. We're utilizing a white, everywhere where we don't have a slate roof, we're utilizing a white roof to minimize heat island effect. We have a small demonstration rain garden for a portion of the stormwater management at the main entrance to the building. The atrium will be daylit, dining will be daylit, and the event room will all have daylighting. We're, to the largest extent possible, and it would achieve a LEED point if we were going for LEED certification, we're utilizing locally manufactured materials, and we will practice construction waste management and recycle the materials that are off products of the construction.
Okay. All right, just a few more questions. Hamlin Engineering asked about the construction schedule. Their question was testimony should be provided as to what general activities are anticipated during early site work in utilities. Can you explain that to the board?
The period of early site work is May 20, I'm sorry, May 2015 to August 2015. The early site work consists of the installation of the stormwater system, which is an underground system. It includes the installation of the service drive, which will provide access as we described earlier. And it also, the university would like to install a portion of the landscape screening so that it can be established, have this time period to be established, and also serve to screen the service drive right from the beginning in the process, and also screen the construction activities. The other aspect of the early site work is that there are a number of utility relocations that have to take place, and they will be accomplished during this time period.
All right. So you said one thing, a particular important set, the university is willing to start installing the landscaping as they start preliminary site work.
That is correct.
All right. And the schedule to do that, will they work with Mr. Renda, the borough engineer, on that?
That is correct.
All right. Now, Hamlin also asked how long it will take to demolish the temporary dining facilities. That would be on their question number eight. Do you recall that one?
Yes, I do. The temporary dining facilities will be demolished in a period of, I would say, about 16 to 90 days. And I'm including within that, it's a, I'll say, manufactured building. It is relatively, it's made to come apart. So I'm including within that not only the removal of the building, but also the restoration of the Galley-on-Lawn.
All right. And now, the selection of the sites for the, of the site of the temporary dining facility, what was the driving force in that regard?
The temporary dining facility is positioned on the Galley-on-Lawn. It's positioned within the allowable building area. The Galley-on-Lawn has had a history of being a space that occasionally, at special events, has had tents. It is a position that affords the university's students access without crossing the construction path. And it's also a position that allows the temporary dining facility to be serviced by the service drive that services the main building.
And is that site a particular advantage because of its grade?
Well, it happens to be a reasonably flat site, which is obviously desirable. We didn't want to undertake a grading operation for temporary dining. It also serves a collateral benefit in that it will be a pavilion-like building, such as you normally see in tennis and sporting tournaments. It'll be a desirable-looking building, and it will shield, act as a shield in a buffer to the construction activities.
Can you go, can we take a look quickly at your perspective again? Can you show us where the temporary dining facility would be in that, one of those perspectives?
Certainly.
I think the middle perspective of your new building.
Well, if, this may not be the absolute best one to show, and I have another one which is closer in, but what we're looking at here is from the other side of South Orange Avenue. This is the Galley-on-Lawn, and it will be on this lawn area beyond the setback and outside, obviously outside of the footprint of the new building.
All right. And there were a few other questions about temporary dining facility. Could all of these facilities be incorporated into one? That was one of the questions that was posed.
What we have done, with regard to that question, is we have done some consolidation and some shifting. We still have a situation where we have the temporary dining pavilion, which is located on the Galley-on-Lawn. And then we have four supporting modular buildings that are, have now been shifted to the south side of the service drive. They're further in onto the campus, and they're consolidated in that location. There's also two that remain between the service drive and the fence. But if people recall that in our prior submission, we had one that was further down near the university green, and that one has been consolidated.
All right. And then finally, there was a suggestion that perhaps the service road might be sunk and burned. Is that something that's doable from your standpoint?
We did look at changing the grading to the service drive, and the condition I would like to describe is that where the service drive is positioned, that there are some cuts that are required that, in terms of grading. And we're trying to mitigate those cuts so that we don't have, I'll say, steep, we want to have manageable slopes between the inner edge of the service drive and the existing building. So that's one obstacle to bear, making it lower. The other issue is as we get to the area of the turnaround, we are encountering a number of underground utilities. We're encountering the stormwater management installation, and we also have the bus dock, which is being relocated, but it's a tight cross-section of grade and underground conditions.
So your answer is that's not a practical?
It's not a practical consideration.
All right.
Again, one other aspect of that is we are providing emergency access to buildings that had limited emergency access in the past. And we want to have that fire lane, emergency lane at a reasonable grade location in relationship to the buildings that it serves.
All right. Are there any more boards that you wish to show the board?
I think that summarizes what we have to say.
I have no further questions.
Thank you very much. Board, do you have questions for this witness? Dan?
I have two questions, please. The first was, is there more than one east-west access through this building between the two parts of campus, or is there only the one atrium east-west access?
There's one primary east-west access, which is more or less online and picks up the major circulation that I described. There's a secondary one which weaves under Xavier Hall and goes through the building and aligns with the edge of the campus green that is further to the south. So there are two, but the intention in the design is to have one primary access that drives the student body to one common space.
And the second thing is you indicated, I think rightfully, to do the landscaping early. Can you do the landscaping as part of the first part with trees that are already fairly mature so that there is not a long growth time?
Yes.
Do you know what the caliper you'd be looking at? Or can you come back?
I think it would be best that we come back with a landscape indication from our landscape architect what that caliper will be.
When you start construction, what are your construction hours going to be?
There is a municipal ordinance on construction hours. We would, of course, abide by that.
The other question is, especially when it comes to the concrete trucks, who love to get to sites really early, staging, would you be staging those concrete trucks on your campus? Otherwise, you can't stage them on South Orange Avenue, which means you'd be staging the neighborhood, which wouldn't be good. So where would you have the concrete truck staged?
I'm not sure that I can answer that question, but I can say that we're currently doing work on the campus, and there has been some off-site facilities identified for parking and for staging, and that, I hope that's not the case. I have to defer that question to a construction manager.
Any other questions, Boyd?
I have a quick comment and question. One is, even from reviewing some of the material ahead of time and even just now, I just want to say, I just want to compliment on the style of the building. I think this is a pretty enormous improvement to the existing building that is at the university center. I personally use the building a lot, and just from an architectural standpoint, getting to see some of the views today, it just looks like a really fantastic upgrade. And I think that as we try and connect our two communities a little bit more in town and on campus, I think that there is a value to this upgrade to our residents as well, who may want to take part in some of the events and different things that are going to be able to be hosted in an upgraded, expanded-sized university center. One of the questions I did have, and I do appreciate some of these, the proposed elevations definitely helps give a better sense of what we're actually talking about here. One of the questions I did have last time, and I don't remember who we were asking to look into this, but I was curious about what the traffic count was on South Orange Ave. We talked about the traffic count, you know, the proposed traffic count for the roadway on campus, and I was just curious how to compare that to the kind of trucks that barrel down South Orange Ave on a regular basis every day.
We did a traffic count on South Orange Avenue. We do have a witness about that.
Sorry?
We do have a witness about.
Okay.
Yes.
One other question I had, I know you read where the chief of police said he prefers not to have the berms. I know that your plan shows some type of change in elevation, yet not really a, was it modified based on what they said, or is what you're showing always been the case? I'm just wondering, did you eliminate berms because of that, or what the approach was ultimately?
We didn't make a modification after we received that letter, and I think in a small way, that probably not, you know, a huge change, but there could be some contouring of the areas where the landscape is located. But it's, given the lawn here, the desire for lawn, for service drive, it's probably not going to be a significant change, but we can continue to consider that.
I mean, because I was wondering, and I know we're speaking with Mike next to me, is why they wanted to eliminate the berm? Was it because they wanted better visibility of the site for security purposes? I'm just trying to understand.
I think I may have addressed it, but I'm not certain. I think what they're looking for is a reasonable grade proximity between the service drive, which in effect will serve as a fire lane, and the building that it picks up along the way. And I think they were looking not to have something impede that. The other side, as we get between the service drive and the fence... The other side, as we get between the service drive and the fence, is relatively constrained in width for all the layerings of things that we're doing, different types of trees and shrubs and lawn areas, but I wouldn't preclude where, conditions permitted, you know, bringing some of that in. But I think what the emergency services is probably endorsing is the elevation of that road in relationship to the buildings. If I can speak for them, I'm speculating.
Just a quick question about the emergency services. I'm not sure if you're the right person to ask, but I'll ask anyway. At one point in the last meeting, someone had mentioned something along the lines of that the emergency access road was really designed for police and fire, but not for emergency medical services. And I just wanted to maybe put out there the suggestion that, just the same way that you met with both the chiefs, that you also meet with the rescue squad. Being a member personally, I've, you know, responded to many calls at Seton Hall, and obviously, all the buildings were built to code at the time. Some are difficult to maneuver sometimes, and obviously, the buildings will now comply with all the codes that have been updated since the buildings were built last. But as far as vehicular access, I might just suggest that while you're meeting with emergency services, they also include the rescue squad as well, and see if they have any feedback on any of the proposed changes.
We can certainly do that, and will do that.
Could you please point out on that perspective where you were talking about the height variance, what portion of the building was the effective portion?
The portion where the height variance is required is this power pit wall. You know, in traditional buildings, the power pit wall caps the end of a roof gable. So, that wall is approximately 1'4" in thickness, and it occurs in two locations. It occurs on the east side of the building and on the west side. And then, just the very top of the slate ridge line is about 1'4" above the 75-foot limitation. This is, you know, is dictated by the width of the program elements and the proportions of the gable end.
So, the atrium was five, that's where the five-foot variance was?
Just this very end stone enclosure to the roof structure. It caps the roof on both sides. That's where the five-foot occurs.
Okay.
It's a triangular-shaped piece. It's 1'4" in depth.
Thank you.
Okay, I think our board has done it professionally. Any questions for this witness? No? All right, then, if the public would like to ask questions of this witness, please step forward.
Hi, John Tiefer, 104 South King Monroe. First of all, Mr. Shackleton, let me congratulate you. These really are beautiful drawings, and I can see clearly why the university is so excited about this project. I can't speak for everyone else here from the neighborhood, but I'm personally here because I understand that as much as this is a good thing for the university, it also needs to be good for South Orange. At least in these perspectives, and the proposed one on the top right there marked A14, to me, the other drawings don't give me any sense of perspective. My back-of-the-napkin math tells me this building is 200 times the size of my home. Could you give me some kind of an idea of how big of a structure this is?
Well, you know, I think that the statistic of how large the structure is, is not going to give you a sense of the scale. I mean, and I say that because what we're dealing with here is, as your neighborhood has multiple structures and multiple homes, these are different elements. When I say they're different elements, each part of the design is, I think, an individual building, which in composition touches one another. So, you know, I think that as you come toward South Orange Avenue and you're dealing with, you know, the porch-like structure that I described, you're in the low twenties, you know, 20 feet height of the porch, which is in keeping with your house. As you move more toward the center of the campus, you're dealing with structures that are of the scale of President's Hall and the other universities. So, if I were just to give you a statistic and say how many square feet there are in the building, I think it doesn't do justice to the scale of the building.
Well, at least from that rendering, I'm assuming these are deciduous trees?
The tree, the concept that we are pursuing with regard to the trees is a variety of trees. Some are deciduous and some are, and some are evergreen trees, so that there will be a layering of landscape. It won't be a flat forest wall, and they'll be, you know, adapted to the landscape.
As an architect, someone who's got a lot of experience with this, if you could compare this structure, perhaps with the building that we're in right now, Town Hall, how it compares, just size-wise, to give me an idea of scale?
I don't know, I mean, if you put, I don't know the size of this building, maybe somebody can help you out on that?
You're on your own.
What's the square footage of your, I mean, we're?
Eighty-seven thousand.
Ninety thousand squares.
Yeah, closer to 10,000 or 12,000 square feet.
Perhaps maybe he could answer the question by saying, well, how big the current building is there? Would that help you?
Perhaps.
What's the height of the current building?
The height of the current building is a two-story, is a two-story building, and I would say that that building is about, you know, the reason why I say about, because there's varying grade conditions, and we're measuring from average grades surrounding the building. So, if you follow that average grade calculation, the building would be probably about 40 feet from its lowest point of average grade to its highest point.
So, would you say that the proposed structure is twice or three times what exists?
It's less than twice as high than what exists now.
But as a volume?
But as a volume, it's in that neighborhood.
Three times the size of the current structure?
In terms of height, it's.
Just volume.
In terms of volume, it is more along the lines of two and a half times the current structure. And again, you know, it's a misleading statistic because the loading, I'm going to say the loading dock area is part of that number. And the loading dock area presents itself as a plaza, level with the grade. And I'm, you know, I'm including a lot of building area that is essentially underground structure that will not be perceived as part of that statistic in terms of the total square footage of the building.
I'm really not trying to, because again, this is truly a beautiful project, and I get it. But just as a resident, someone who lives in South Orange, from what you're presenting, and really to contrast with the last presentation, where we were told as a community down to the number of square inches of placard, this gives me no idea, really, the sheer volume. And if it's three times what exists, that sounds like an absolutely enormous project.
It is, again, not three times what exists.
Two and a half.
It's two and a half times, and I think that what exists is all building, all volume. And this building has a lot of its volume under, a portion of its volume under plazas and under grades. So, I think you have to, you really should judge it, I mean, you can judge it any way that you choose to, but I think the perspectives, which are based upon actual grades, revit drawings, which are derived from the working drawings, gives you the probably the best benchmark for the volume of the building and how the building will appear, rather than the statistic. But certainly give me that statistic as well. It's two and a half times. Appreciate it.
Just for the record, as part of the documents that's sent to you, the existing University Center is 82,000 square feet.
So, closer to the mic.
The existing University Center is 83,000 square feet, and the existing Duffy Hall, which is being demolished, is 32,000 square feet, for a total of 115,000 square feet. And the proposed center is 203,000 square feet. So, it's not, it's less than two times, it's less than two times. Those are the exact.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a number of questions. Janet at Rosenthal again. You mentioned a bus stop. What bus stop, where?
There's no bus stop that is contemplated in a relationship to this building. The university doesn't bring buses in.
I think you said bus stop. You said bus duct?
What did you say? We thought you said that there was a bus stop.
No, no. What I was referring to is a technical term with regard to electrical utility. I apologize for the confusion.
Okay. My second question is, do you realize that the site plan on here that says it's 1/8" equals 1 foot, shows then that this access road is 2 feet wide, and that the planting area is about 4 feet wide?
That probably one of the dangers of giving you that drawing is that that's been reduced from the larger drawing.
I'm sorry, this drawing could never have been to scale. It's impossible.
It's not to scale.
It's not to scale. That's a reduction for our uses.
When does the community get to see a two-scale drawing that shows the entire access road?
We can make that available to you.
And the, where the trucks will be? I agree, this is a lovely building, but it, in all of your diagrams, where is the one that shows when there are four trucks in the loading zone, what will that look like? And when there are trucks driving down the access road, what does that look like? And how close is it to South Orange Avenue? Where, how close is this access road to the sidewalk and to Warren Court?
Ma'am, I can answer that. The board has been given documents that show this. We've given you one there just because it's, so, I mean, I don't know if residents.
Because we don't get accurate information. We're trying to get an evaluation of the building. We all agree.
Whoever's speaking needs to use the microphone.
All right, I will. I might build something lovely in my yard, but if it is not in keeping with the neighborhood, if it infringes on my neighbor's rights, it doesn't matter how lovely it is. And I grew up in a university town, and I appreciate a university.
Ma'am, I have to interrupt you, I'm sorry. This, I understand what you're saying. The process that we have here now is that these are questions you need to, no, just listen to me. The board has been provided a lot of documents that shows fairly clearly what the scale is for most of the elements you're talking about. What we'll make sure is that we distribute at the next meeting, because there will be a next meeting, documents that you can pick up when you come in the door, that shows the same things that you're asking for, that we've had access to. So, we're here to represent you, to represent the village. And just so you know, the applicant has provided us with a lot of information that perhaps you don't have. So, we'll take your concerns to heart, and we'll make that information available to you when you walk in the door next month, okay? But we have to restrict.
I appreciate, but I was here last time, and I asked all these questions then, and I was told this would be when they were answered. And, you know, I feel frustrated that.
We haven't put up that, we could put that site.
The university has come without these answers.
Okay, those answers, I don't know what questions you asked for those answers, because I wasn't here and I don't remember from the tape.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, when we initially provided notice of this application, it said the documents are available at Town Hall. The submittal was made more than 10 days in advance of the hearing, and people can come to Town Hall and ask for these documents.
I don't know if you heard that, but they are, all the documents are available in Town Hall for you to look at. Okay. Do we have any other questions of this witness? And what I would please ask you is that you confine what you're saying to a question, because there will be adequate time to express your opinions later.
I have a question regarding the construction schedule for the entire project. So, how long will it take from start to finish?
The earliest, the construction is divided up into different components. You're going to have temporary dining in place, you're going to have landscape in place, and each one of these projects are individual projects that will have a completion timeframe. The university's, and I'd like to go through those timeframes so you get a perspective of what it will be like at various times, but the University Center itself will start construction in August of 2016, and it will be a one-year construction period, it'll be completed in 2018. In that two-year period, I think it's fair to say that in approximately 14 months, that this building will be up and enclosed, and that the remaining period of the two years will be largely interior construction related to more complex program elements, but finishing out the interior of the building related to the auditorium. The temporary dining facility is, begins in 2015, and the early site work is the earliest activity, which is in May 2015. So, from the earliest activity, which is the site work piece, which will be completed in that same year in August, you're going from 2015 to 2018. But again, I want to sort of emphasize that you're not dealing with, first, you're dealing with a, you know, a landscape and utilities project, then you're dealing with the temporary dining project, and then you'll be dealing with the University Center project. So, they're each individual components.
Right, so it sounds more like three years than two years.
That's correct.
I am living on Elm Court. I have trucks backing up into temporary access to Seton Hall. Is that in any way related to the project that we are discussing?
I can say definitively it's unrelated to the project, and that's one of the conditions that will not, I can't anticipate that temporary access condition having to occur in the future.
Right, so you are not building or doing work for the retaining wall that is necessary for the service road at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Just, you remarked earlier about the distance from South Orange Avenue to the loading docks, and you said.
Close to two feet.
And you indicated the distance. Could you tell me what that distance was again?
We scaled it off of our drawing, but we came up with approximately 200 feet from the property line to the edge of the plaza, which I described as a closure point, and another 45 feet to the face of the dock door.
All right, so that's about 245 feet.
Right.
All right, so, if you want to get kind of, I'm pretty simple, so I need like, I equate it to things I know.
Right.
Most people know too. So, like a football field, that's about 360 feet, 120 yards.
Right, right.
If I'm standing in the end zone, I can usually see the other goalpost, right?
If, well, the football field is a flat, is a flat object without the benefit of screening.
Your elevation's not that high, so I would be able to see the other side generally.
We have, I mean, it's within seeing, seeing distance, that's correct.
Okay. So, to give us some perspective, if you're about 245 feet, that's about three fifths of what we consider football field.
Right.
Right? So, you can see that, you can see what's there. If it's a structure and it's raised above the elevation, which it has to be, you can see the structure and you can, right? So, I just want to make sure I kind of understand what you mean.
Let me try and provide sort of an analogy, and I'm looking at the wall that's behind you.
Yes, sir.
And I, there's portions of it that I can't see, and I'm equating you to the landscape, the buffer that we described. So, yes, in terms of pure distance, it's a visible distance, but if you put a buffer between the two objects, the sightline is interrupted, and that's what I was trying to illustrate within my section.
And one more, one more.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, you've got your sightline, you've got your buffer. Is your, is your buffer more than about 15 feet high? If it's a grade, go more than 15 feet.
There's two elements of the.
If I'm looking, just, I'm sorry, if I'm looking at the loading dock area, is that buffer higher than 15 feet in any way?
There's, the buffer, if you include the grade change and the height of the landscape materials, as well as the sightline. So, we take a sightline to the trees, and I can measure the trees. So, you're looking at a 5-foot-high eye, and let's just say for argument's sake that it's a 12-foot-high thing, so that line continues to rise vertically, just by geometry, above the buffer. So, by the time you get 200 in feet, you're quite a. you're quite a distance, your sightline is quite a distance higher.
But you can't see that.
That's, no, that's not the case.
You can't see, you're, you're saying there's no way it's visible from the street? Because actually.
I am saying with, you know, with, if we put in the density of landscape elements and we balance that also with the desire to have some lawn area, in this particular location, I would say that's an area that will have dense shrubberies and that you will not see into the loading dock with the shrubs installed.
But we're going to help you. Thank you. I think one of the things that while the sections were very helpful, we're going to ask you to actually quantify all that in those sections.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we'll, we'll be able to provide to everybody literally dimensions, literal dimensions for all these images. Okay.
Very quick, just become, it came up several times. So you will be providing all the numbers related to the new paved areas due to construction, including the new service center, the new service road, the turning circle? All that will, we will have access to that.
That, that is correct. We will be submitting that to the board and the public will have access.
You have, you currently have access to everything we have right now. Just so that everybody here understands that they're available to you, they're, they're not held in any kind of vault. Any other questions? Sure.
John G., 10 Elm Court. I understand you've been through this and I'm not going to rehash everything, but what I really think we're all having problems with here, at least from the public, is exactly what we're going to see from the street. And I know you've got these, I understand what we've got here, but what I don't really, a couple of things I don't understand is, what I'd like to see is a shot from basically across the street from. I'm sorry, across the street from the loading dock, where I can look directly at the, what we call the bay doors or whatever, just to figure out what it is we can see or what we can't see from there. So, if I can point it out to you, what I'm talking about from right here, facing directly into the loading dock, what am I going to see from the street? Is what I'm interested in.
Absolutely. That photograph was taken by my, my associate and it is right at, right at this, taken right at this point and it's an actual photograph. And then what has been put onto it through Photoshop is two, two elements. The new building and the proposed landscape and the contour of the service drive. So you're looking at a montage between the existing conditions from the location that you asked for the sightline to be generated and the existing conditions and the improvements that I have been describing this evening.
So where is the loading dock in this photo?
Uh, actually, we have allowed for a glimpse of the loading dock, which really doesn't have to be the case. But I'm pointing to the loading docks right now and I'm pointing to the out, again, to the outer edge of the plaza and to the closure door. And what you're seeing right there, between these two bushes, is that, that closure point. It certainly could be the case that we could, we could continue that bush line across, but for the clarity of this presentation, I wanted to indicate precisely, photographically, where, where that would occur.
And I, so there's one door that's going to be, that's what I'm going to see?
You're, what you're, what you're going to see, depending on how dense, is either nothing or, or one, or one top, actually the very top of the, of the, of the door.
So if a truck is pulling in there though, I'm going to see the truck full face on or?
Well, actually, when the truck is within that, within that area, it, it will be, it will be screened by, by the landscape and that is something that we will, you know, work, work to achieve and still not have the dense forest wall that people were concerned about. But when the truck is on that service drive, it will be within the landscape, beyond the landscape buffer.
What I'm actually talking about when it pulls into the loading dock.
I'm actually describing that same, that same condition when it pulls into the loading dock.
The other question I have is, what, if any, you guys.
You, you can keep going.
Was there, obviously there's going to be some noise and I know somebody else is going to speak to that later. It's going to be generated by the additional truck traffic, the backing up, things like that. I mean, I'm not an expert obviously, but I don't think shrubs are going to block noise. What if anything's being done to mitigate the noise that's going to be generated by these trucks?
We, we have an acoustical, an engineering firm that was hired to do that study and that's.
We have testimony coming.
I understand about the, I understand, okay. Well, I, so presumably that person's going to address not simply what the results, but what's being done to, if anything, to mitigate the noise that's going to be generated by this.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two questions. The first one is, are you intending to plant mature trees?
I'm not, I'm not sure how you would define mature, mature trees.
Well, such that when they're planted, we, from day one, do not see the idling trucks or the loading dock.
Well, we're, we're planting them as part of the, the early site work and we will, will work with South Orange to get the, the level of maturity of trees, which is, is, is acceptable.
Thank you. And then the second question is, if there's a backup, because as we heard before, sometimes these trucks don't come on schedule and they may not come when they're supposed to come, where do the trucks idle as they're waiting to get into the loading dock?
Yeah, I, you know, I think given the density of traffic that it's, I don't, I don't see the likelihood of a back, of a backup, but they, they can certainly begin to queue up all the way at the current guardhouse and gate area.
But it would not be on South Orange Avenue?
Um, it doesn't have to be.
It could be on South Orange Avenue?
Uh, I think the university would take steps and take action to prevent that from happening.
Thank you.
If I may, I have one follow-up, please. Mr. Copley was kind enough to give dimensions. How many square foot exist? How many square feet are proposed? I'm wondering how many square foot are possible within the current building code?
You mean what's permitted?
What's permitted?
It's permitted what they're building?
There's no variance on the size.
But with the height variance and the distance variance?
Those are variances we're considering as the height of two particular height issues.
There's a floor area ratio standard in the university zone.
Okay.
And so that's what governs.
So it's as of right in terms of size?
Building density and volume doesn't exceed any.
Right. That's good.
Given the existing site conditions, how, if, if we did deny these variances, how much smaller would the building be?
The variances are not about the building's size, the building's height.
Sure, but if you.
And the closeness.
They could just change the pitch of the roof.
Yeah, but if you move the wall 25 feet to get that.
They wouldn't have to, they could just change the pitch of the roof and fall within the variance. They're looking for a particular style and a look and therefore they want to have it at a particular angle, which takes it higher than the norm it would be within code. So the only thing they'd have to do to bring within code would be bring the roof down.
Got it.
Well, there is also a request for a distance between building variance. Correct, Mr. Copley?
Yes, there is a increase of the distance variance from 37 feet to 27 feet. In other words, there's an existing 37-foot difference. Maybe you should testify about that. I don't think we asked you about that.
I, I think the board is clear.
What?
Board is clear on that?
The board is clear, oh, okay.
But no, yes, ask one question. Is there, is there an architectural reason for that variance?
There, there are two program elements that are adjacent to Xavier Hall. One, one is the, is the theater and that's, and not a program element, but an existing condition in that location is a, is a utility, is a utility tunnel. And another existing condition is, is Madison Drive. And that program size of the, let's say, theater and, and lecture hall component and auditorium, I should describe it really as an auditorium component, is, is, is pushing the need for that variance. But one other aspect of this building in that location is that it steps back from the current footprint, about 15 feet approximately from the, from the face of the existing Duffy, Duffy Hall. So it's further away from the property line. So I think that the overall impact in terms of the presentation of the, of the building from the, from the south will, will be, will be quite a bit more favorable than what's, what's currently, what's currently there. It's a smaller, it's a building element. It's a one-story element and then it's, then it steps back. And we're creating a view, opening up the campus in this area volumetrically to create a view of, of Walsh library.
Just so the public will know, where, where is that area? Just point to it on the drawing there.
So the area where, where this occurs is the condition right where I'm pointing and it occurs because right at that same area, there's, there's a stair tower on the existing building. So that's, that's why. But the, it is, is tighter in that location and we're working with the distance between Madison Road and, and a theater within that location and then that, that stair tower. But the volume of this portion of the building, I think, will present itself as less impactful than the existing, existing Duffy Hall because it's moved further away from the south and it's a smaller building, building element.
Thank you. I think we're done with public questions. Thank you very much. Well.
So.
I think we've had a great time. But I think elder things have to come to an end. So, um, we do have an issue coming up August 5th. Because how many more witnesses do you have?
Several. I think, you know, you have another application pending. I heard you scheduled them for August 5th. Might we have a special meeting sometime in August to try to?
I would absolutely say yes, except August is such a hard time to get our members together. We could ask. It's not the easiest time. It is the height of the summer.
I mean, if we.
Conversely.
If we can't, if we can't schedule a separate special meeting, I mean, can we really make an effort to make sure this gets done in the next one?
Well, when we say then, we can, we always try.
But I mean, tonight.
But it's a very, well, I think it's only fair to, you know, recognize it's very important. We have public here, so it does take a little longer.
Not that I'm essential, but I'm out of town on August 5th, so that's why.
How do you feel about September? I mean, I, I, I know it sounds, I mean, and we do have another, we now have another, what's it called? We pushed another application, but.
You don't want to do another special meeting on August?
I can ask, but I, I don't know whether we can.
As much as we're, as much as we're anxious to finish, it has been going on a while. But, you know, a September meeting, if we could have a full evening and get this over with, that would be.
I, I totally agree. I don't know what to do about our other applicant.
Could we do a straw vote just on whether or not August is a possibility to do a special meeting?
Well, first we'd have to ask what, when we're available for the call. Do you have that calendar, OJetti? When, when is our September meeting?
September 7th.
Where are you going? 12th week.
First week of what?
First, first of August 6th.
Only because if we start pushing later on, we're going to start dealing with moving issues and we're going to be in a completely different location.
When, when do we start?
Uh, it's after the 12th. Chairs are going to start disappearing, so. So after the board of trustee meetings, we're starting, we're going to start building things.
What day is that?
Uh, that's a Monday, it's their meeting.
We have, we have a meeting Monday.
31st, are you suggesting the 31st, Adam? Is that what I heard?
No, I'm suggesting maybe the 7th or 8th.
Oh, okay. So we already have a meeting on August 5th. He's saying do two meetings that week.
Do six, six or seven?
I think if we were able to give them a set of questions that we, you know, we definitely need answered and we kind of give them that heads up, give them, make sure they have enough time to give it back to us. But hopefully we can turn around and make a decision.
OJetti, are you able to tell us what nights are available that week?
Well, the 6th will be the zoning board. Yeah, we can't do the 6th.
How about the 7th?
The 7th is possible.
Can't, can't make the 7th.
Is the 7th and 8th are available?
Yeah.
And the 8th is what, a Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
How about the 8th? I'm at the, the meeting on Saturday.
8th works for me.
Everybody who can make the 8th, raise your hand.
Yeah, I think the, is it Thursday? Is there only, is September out for a meeting?
I mean, do you want to push it to September?
We, I mean, we will push it to September if we can get a full night's meeting at some point.
It sounded like there might, August 8th is possible. Could we get that hand raised?
Can, can, can make it. I can't. Michael can make it.
What's the date?
I mean, personally, I think it's important enough application to not reduce our size.
11.
Once we move, we will be very restrictive on, we're, we're going to have one night a month, basically, at SOPA. So it's going.
We can do it at the Bear. One night a month is all SOPA is giving you?
Well, we're getting Mondays at SOPA, but you have the board of trustee meetings, the board of adjustments, the planning boards, sharing a lot of those Mondays, plus the historic board.
If we don't televise it, we can be at the, at the Bear Center if we have to.
We could make arrangements to do it at the Bear, but yes, then we lose to televise and it's also a much smaller room.
July 29th work? Not for me?
No.
I'm away. I'm away. Where are you going? You just went away.
I'm running. All right. It looks like the August 7th, 8th doesn't, isn't going to work. I think it's better to try and shoot for September.
But should we be knocking off? I mean, is that fair to Giorgio? Right, and we keep pushing people, not pleading.
It's September, I'm sure they're going to submit before September. They don't have to go first. It's up to you. You have a pending application.
Okay. We'll do you September and get it done.
Regular, regular meeting? Which is what they?
That's a good question.
It's the 11th.
September 11th.
September 11th.
Tom, and that, that's the, the only one that's on Giorgio's that night?
September 11th.
Well, I think we'll have to put, we'll.
Which will be at SOPA.
So it's not Monday nights?
It may not work.
September 11th is a Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday?
Uh, wait a minute.
We're using Monday.
We're going to be doing Monday, yeah.
So we got to change the schedule. Nice to have this.
Adam, I've got the planning board on the 11th and on the 2nd, for some reason, both on the village calendar.
We're going to have to.
2nd can't be because that's Labor Day.
That's why, then that's why.
September 11th? It will, it's, it can't because we only have Mondays at SOPA.
We're going to have to see if.
Can't do it the 11th.
If, if SOPA allowed us or recognized that there was a holiday and that we had to move it or if that's something we're going to have. Well, they have shows already programmed. And so if they do have a show on that date, we will have to then probably find a different location.
I'm sure we could charge a mission to these meetings.
Have music inter.
And where will that?
I don't think it's a good idea when we should work it out, but I don't think we should move to Bear and not televise this. I think it's important enough that people should be able to watch the video.
Which means we may have to move from the 11th to another date then.
We'll have to follow up. Yeah, we'll have to follow up.
Well, just let us know.
So, while we would love to meet on the 11th because we're moving out of Village Hall, there may be some complexities where we're going and when we have access to it. So while we've pledged to hear you in September, we're not exactly sure where or exactly when. I don't think we can.
For the sake of the record, we're going to adjourn it to the 11th.
Yeah, we will adjourn it to the 11th.
Place, place to be announced.
I think that's the way to consider. Yes, place to be announced.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, thank you, board. We are adjourned.